All right. Good evening, everyone. We'd like to go ahead and welcome you to the Fruta City Council meeting. The time is now seven oh two P M. And we're going to go ahead and call our meeting to order. Deb, would you please call roll?
Counsel Bremen.
Here.
Counsel Perser.
Here.
Counsel Williams. Counsel Cryer is excused absent. Counsel Miller.
Present.
Counsel Hansi.
Here.
All right, we're going to move into our moment of silence and pledge of allegiance. Could you all stand with us? We'd like to take the opportunity to allow a moment of silence for all faith and beliefs, the opportunity for a silent prayer. Thank you. If you'd please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda?
No changes to the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any other questions or comments on that? All right, hearing none, would you please poll council?
Counsel Bremen.
Yes.
Counsel Perser.
Yes.
Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Counsel Miller.
Yes.
Counsel Hansi.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, we've got one proclamation and one presentation tonight. And so our first one's a proclamation. And I'm asked Amy to read that, but it's for National Long Term Care Residents Rights Month. And we've got Jesse Bond here that can talk. Once we read the proclamation, we'll ask you to come up and say a few words. So go ahead, Amy.
Whereas there are 1.3 million individuals living in 15,600 nursing homes and over 800,000 individuals living in 28,900 assisted living or residential care facilities in the United States. And whereas the Federal Nursing Home Reform Act of 1987 guarantees residents their individual rights in order to promote and maintain their dignity and autonomy. And whereas all residents should be aware of their rights, so they may be empowered to live with dignity and self determination. And whereas we wish to honor and celebrate these citizens, to recognize their rich individual individuality and to reaffirm their right to vote and participate politically, including the right to have a say in their care. And whereas individuals and groups across the country will be celebrating Residents Rights Month with the theme Amplify Our Voices, emphasizing a community of long term care residents coming together to make their voices heard. Now, therefore, we, the Fruta City Council, on behalf of Mayor Joel Kincaid of the City of Fruta, do hereby proclaim October 2023 as National Long Term Care Residents Rights Month in the City of Fruta and encourage all citizens to join us in these important observances.
All right, if you'd like to come up and say a few words.
Short and sweet. I just want to thank the council for taking a moment to keep our residents in long term care visible in our community. And I just ask that you also keep them visible in your thoughts. And as we do our planning, just remember them. There's a lot of people out there that treat them as invisible. Don't let that be any single one of us. Thanks.
All right, well, come on up. We've got a proclamation for you.
I think you can see what you do. Yeah.
All right, we're going to move into our, well, it's our table review committee report. And so we're going to have a presentation from the Tabor Committee that we set up. So who's in charge of that one? Margaret's going to do the.
We have three members of the committee, Robin, Melissa, and Heather here. And I think Melissa's going to do a presentation for you.
Well, thanks for having us here tonight and thanks for giving us this opportunity to be on the committee and review things. There were five of us. What was nice about this committee that I felt I was somebody new. I'd never been on a committee. I'm just starting to get involved in our city and things that go on. So it was nice to hear from those that have been involved for quite some time and those that have not. We had great opinions from all over the spectrum. So it was, it was really good conversation. So Robin wants to talk tonight just about her feelings of the committee and work it into what our job was and what our recommendation.
Hi, my name's Robin Dig. And I say ditto to everything that she just said. I was had the pleasure of getting to know some very nice, well informed people on this committee. And they took it very seriously. I just have a little blurb I'd like to read, if I may. I joined this committee very skeptical that the potential removal of the Tabor tax refund that has been approved by Colorado citizens was being removed. I wanted to be a citizen voice and an ear as to what this committee was all about. In being asked to join this committee, I learned the true purpose of this committee, which is to be held accountable to the citizens of Fruta as to the funds and spending of such funds on the improvements made to our community. I found this committee dedicated to funding accuracy and keeping its citizens duly informed that what they have been entrusted to by Fruta citizens to do, they did. I learned so very much from the other members of this committee. Though it was discussed at our meetings to have these funds remain in perpetuity, it was decided that a six year review of how these funds were allocated would remain intact, thereby continuing the accountability to the citizens on the usage of these Tabor dollars. I agree with the rest of the committee that this initiative should be placed on the upcoming April 2024 ballot. I believe the citizens of Fruta have been provided with what the Tabor expenditures promised. Thanks.
Good job, Robin. She pretty much just said our whole presentation. In her thing. So, um, yes, we, we've been pleased reviewing the history of Fruta and Tabor that the city has done, what they said that they would do with the funds, what their plans are to do with the funds in the future. So really, our recommendation is to continue going to the people, going to the voters, putting it on the ballot again in April 2024 and asking the citizens to vote that the city gets to keep the retention of it.
I just think one of the significant pieces that.
You're talking about talking in the microphone.
One of the significant conversation pieces for us, I mean, there was Karen, myself and Lori on there who knew quite a bit and Robin and Melissa were new to it all. And they had great questions. And then Margaret was there, obviously, with all of the stats and data that we needed. A couple of significant pieces were, I don't remember the exact dollar amount. It was like 9.8 million dollars in capital projects that we were able to accomplish. And six of it was from the excess revenues. And so then the rest were the matching grants. There were so many grants that we were able to apply for because we had the revenues in our account that then we were able to get the grant money and do even more because we kept the we kept the revenues. And I think that was significant. It seems like there was, there were lots of significant moments. Actually, we, we had a riotous good time. Yeah. And then they had really good questions. And I think the committee itself is like the best of democracy. You, you had people from left, right, and in the middle and everywhere in between. Everyone was bringing forth their own questions and having a really great civil discourse. And then we all came to pretty much the same conclusion that as long as accountability is built in and we know where the money's going to, then it makes sense to be able to do these huge projects for our city that we couldn't otherwise do. So yeah, it was a great process.
All right. I just want to say thank you guys for serving on that committee. It's always good to have a diverse committee that's willing to talk and give us insight. So I don't know what else, if anybody else has any questions or comments or.
My only comment is thank you for the effort and the seriousness and everything you put into it. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Don't go away yet because we got to make sure we approve the recommendation. So do we? If there's no other discussion, do we have a motion to accept this?
I will gladly move to accept the Tabor Citizen Review Committee 2023 final report and proceed with the introduction of an ordinance to implement recommendation of the committee and place a question on the ballot for the April 2nd, 2024 regular municipal election for voter consideration.
A second.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Is there any other questions or comments related to this? All right, hearing none, would you please poll council?
Counsel Perser.
Yes.
Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Counsel Miller.
Affirmative.
Counsel Hansi.
Yes.
Counsel Bremen.
Oh, yeah.
Motion passes five zero.
All right. Well, thanks again.
Thanks, guys.
You're welcome to sit through the next three hours if you want.
Come on, Heather.
All right, with that, we're going to move into our public participation. So this section is set aside for the city council to listen to comments from the public regarding items that do not appear on the agenda. Generally, the city council will not take any action on these items. So if there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on something that's not on the agenda, now's your opportunity. All right, I'm hearing none. We're going to go ahead and close public participation and move into our consent agenda. So these are items where all conditions or requirements have been agreed to or met prior to the time they come before council for final action. They'll all be voted on with one vote. So with that, we're going to open up the consent agenda. So if anybody in the audience would like to speak on any item on the consent agenda, now would be your opportunity. All right, I'm seeing none. So I'm going to close public participation and consent agenda and bring it back to council. Does anybody have any questions or comments on consent? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda as it appears before us.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, Deb, would you please poll council?
Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Counsel Miller.
Yes.
Counsel Hansi.
Yes.
Counsel Bremen.
Yes.
Counsel Perser.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, with that, we're going to move into our public hearings. We've got three public hearings tonight. The first two are quasi judicial hearings. Both of them are liquor permit applications. And we've got our deputy city clerk Deb Woods here to present.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Deb Woods, Deputy City Clerk. And I'm presenting the Greater Grand Junction Sports Commission's application for a special event liquor permit. The event is the Rimrock Marathon, which will be held this year on Sunday, November 5th from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at the Fruta Community Center. The Greater Grand Junction Sports Commission has requested to provide beer at this year's Rimrock Marathon, which starts at various locations on the Colorado National Monument and finishes at the enclosed backyard of the Fruta Community Center. Participants will receive one free beer ticket as part of their entry, and additional beer will be available for sale by the Greater Grand Junction Sports Commission. The diagram, excuse me, of the proposed licensed premises included in your council packet illustrates the area at the, at the community center that will be enclosed with fencing, and it has one exit and entrance. IDs will be checked and wristbands will be issued to those who are 21 or over at the one entrance slash exit into the licensed premises. Fruta Chief of Police Dave Kraus reviewed the application and provided his statement that there was nothing that would prohibit the issuance of the license being requested. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation to the city council that the application for the special event liquor permit be approved, subject to the following conditions. One applicant will discontinue serving alcohol at 5:30 p.m. to allow patrons 30 minutes, 30 minutes to finish their beverages and leave the area. Two, all alcohol will be secured and removed by 6:00 p.m. And three, the licensee needs to be aware that they're solely responsible for control of the licensed premises in regard to alcohol possession, consumption, and adherence to state and municipal laws. And that concludes my presentation. And Ben Snyder with the Greater Grand Junction Sports Commission is present this evening. There he is, as the applicant's representative. So I'll turn it over to Ben for any additional comments he will have.
Thank you, Deb. Thank you, counsel, for allowing this to be reviewed. Deb said exactly how it's going to work. Runners for finish, the cross the finish line right in front of the east, west side of the Fruta Community Center. Get right into the backyard where beverage food will be provided to them. Any questions from the council?
All right, we're going to open up public comment. And then if anybody has questions, we'll come back to you. All right, with that, we're going to open this up to public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item, now's your opportunity. All right, hearing none, we're going to close public comment and bring it back to council. Does anybody have any questions? I know it said 6:00 p.m. I know your flyer says event over at 5:00 p.m. So is.
We anticipate being out there honestly by 4:30 at the latest, but there's always the opportunity for some stragglers that may turn into walkers by the end of the race. We'll give them, give them the time up to 6:00 p.m., but you never know. So.
I move to approve the application for a special events permit for the Greater Grand Junction Sports Commission to sell beer from or for the Rimrock Marathon at the Fruta Community Center, subject to the conditions stated by staff.
Second. All right, we've got a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, Deb, would you please poll council?
Counsel Miller.
Yes.
Counsel Hansi.
Yes.
Counsel Bremen.
Yes.
Counsel Perser.
Yes.
Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you very much.
All right. And then we're on to our, our next special event liquor permit application. Our deputy city clerk Deb Woods here to present.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The second special event liquor permit application was submitted by the Fruta Area Chamber of Commerce. The name of the event is Cups for a Cure, which is a fundraiser to help bring awareness to breast cancer. The Fruta Area Chamber of Commerce has requested to sell and serve beer and wine at Cups for a Cure. And the diagram of the licensed premises included in your council packet illustrates the area at Civic Center Memorial Park that will be enclosed with the, with fencing. Signage will be placed throughout the licensed area stating that no alcohol is permitted outside the fenced area. Chamber staff and volunteers will be monitoring the licensed area and the consumption of alcohol to ensure that no alcohol enters or leaves the area. Fruta Chief of Police Dave Kraus reviewed the chamber's application and issued his statement that there was nothing that would prohibit the issuance of the license being requested. And one thing I forgot to mention was the, the date and time of the event, which will be Saturday, September 28th from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. here at Civic Center Memorial Park. It is staff's recommendation that the city council approve this application for the special event liquor permit, subject to the following conditions. Applicant will discontinue serving alcohol at 3:30 p.m. to allow patrons 30 minutes to finish their beverages and leave the area. All alcohol will be secured and removed by 4:00 p.m. And the licensee needs to be aware that they are solely responsible for control of the licensed premises in regard to alcohol possession, consumption, and adherence to state and municipal laws. And that concludes my presentation. We've got Kayla Stack with the Fruta Chamber with us virtually tonight. And I will ask her to introduce herself and she can provide any further information that you guys may have. Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, Ben. Yeah, sorry about that. October.
Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Kayla Stock. I'm the program event coordinator for the Fruta Chamber. Um, we are asking for a liquor license for our Cups for a Cure event, which is, as Deb said, at Civic Center Park, October 28th, 1:00 to 4:00. And this is just to raise awareness for breast cancer and proceeds from this event will be donated to Family Health West and Community Hospitals Foundation.
All right, with that, then we're going to open it up to public comment. So if there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item, now's your opportunity. All right, hearing none, we're going to close public comment and bring it back to council. Does anybody have any questions related to this? All right, then do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the application for special events liquor permit for the Fruta Area Chamber of Commerce to sell and serve beer and wine at the Cups for the Cure event to be held on Saturday, October 28th, 2023, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. at Civic Center Memorial Park, subject to the conditions stated by staff.
Second.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, Deb, would you please poll council?
Counsel Hansi.
Yes.
Counsel Bremen.
Yes.
Counsel Perser. Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Counsel Miller.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thanks for being here, Kayla.
Thank you guys so much. I appreciate it.
All right, with that, we're going to move into, we've got a legislative hearing. It's ordinance 2023-12. It's a second reading, amending the chapter 2.39 of the Fruta Municipal Code concerning membership of the Fruta Planning Commission. We got our finance director, city clerk Margaret Sell here to present.
Thank you, Mayor. What you have before you is an ordinance that removes the requirement that a city council member or the mayor serve as a member of the Fruta Planning Commission. A fairly simple ordinance adjustment. And a position that could be appointed by, to a citizen of the city.
All right, with that, we're going to open up to public comment. So if there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item, now's your opportunity. All right, hearing none, we're going to close public comment and bring it back to council. Does anybody have any questions on this item? Or comments? Amy?
Just wondering when the final, when am I supposed to stop going to meetings?
30 days after the ordinance is adopted. Is that correct? That's.
Yes. Okay. So I'm planning on the next one, right?
So November will. And November will be the joint, that night will be the joint Planning Commission Council meeting anyway. And then I, then it should be effective, I would guess, by, by the December meetings. So, so you've attended the big last one at the.
Yeah, that was a good way to go out. Lots of participation.
All right. You have enough quorum.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got a poll.
That'll be the only MTC. That'll be, that'll be nice.
So after this, then our next step would be to advertise it again, correct? Because it's not advertised currently.
Correct.
All right, any other questions or comments on this one?
No.
Do we have a motion?
Sure. I move to adopt ordinance 2023-12, amending chapter 2.39 of the Fruta Municipal Code and removing the requirement that the mayor or a council member serve as a member of the planning commission.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, Deb, would you please poll council?
Counsel Bremen.
Yes.
Counsel Perser.
Yes.
Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Counsel Miller. Counsel Hansi.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, with that, we're going to move into our administrative agenda. So our first item is 2024 budget presentations. Infrastructure and core services. And we've got Shannon Bassam, our assistant city manager here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council for the opportunity to present this presentation to you tonight. Of course, Heather always talked about this mic and now it's starting to fall down as soon as she leaves. I know ironically, it's just a screw that we need to tighten. We'll, we'll work with it. Yeah, this is the second of five presentations, formal presentations regarding the 2024 budget. As our charter requires, you did have a, the draft budget presented to you at the September workshop by the city manager. Tonight, we'll be covering capital projects, core services, and our enterprise funds. And then November 7th, two weeks from tonight, three weeks from tonight, I forgot, we have the fifth Tuesday, we'll cover quality of place and personnel, then dive into economic health and development and a budget overview for November 21st, and the budget will be adopted in early December. So as part of this presentation, again, we'll just cover our 2024 capital projects and also any projects that have been reappropriated or will be reappropriated to next year. We'll briefly touch upon core services and kind of trends we're seeing across all funds. And we'll touch upon our enterprise funds as well. So before I get into the capital projects, I just want to give you a general overview of the proposed 2024 budget. As a whole, we have 33.7, about $34 million in expenses. If you were to look at the all fund summary, that number's about 42 million, but for our purposes, we exclude transfers from one fund to another because that's kind of like counting the expenses twice. Like, for example, the general fund, we have $6.3 million. We transfer to the capital projects fund for a specific capital projects. Then that's an actual expense for the project in the capital projects fund. So $33.7 million in expenses. This is an increase of 14% compared to the prior year budget, and this is mostly due to two projects next year, 19 Road, and also the South Mesa Street that we'll be carrying forward. Revenues, we are estimating about $27.3 million overall. This is a decrease of less than 1% from the 2023 budget. And that's mostly just because we're wrapping up a number of capital projects this year, especially out at the wastewater reclamation facility that we got grant funding for. I think between the Aeration Project and the H2S Project, we received about 1.6, 1.7 million dollars. So that's kind of where you see the decrease from this year's budget, just due to wrapping those projects up. We're certainly happy to have those hopefully be completed soon and by the end of the year. And then as our Tabor question allows, as you heard from the committee tonight, we're using about $6.4 million in fund balance to pay for some of these capital projects. That is the deficit that you see in front of you, and all that money is being spent on either capital projects or equipment as well. There's a few of the smaller funds, like the irrigation fund we have. I want to say 4,000 being used for equipment just to help with some replacements that we have. So this is your 2024 expenses overall, excluding transfers. For operations, we have $18.3 million. That's things like personnel, salaries, benefits, purchase professional services, like your engineering, your attorney, professional development. We have purchased property services, kind of everything minus capital and a few other things like debt for operations. Capital is by far your biggest expense for next year at $13.3 million, roughly 40% of the overall budget. And we do have a little over $2 million in debt for the Fruta Community Center and also the wastewater reclamation facility. So dive right into our capital projects for 2024. These projects were recommended to you by a team of members on our leadership team and include myself, our public works director, parks and recreation director, our, and our city engineer. We looked at prior year budgets and we looked at some of our projects that we've been working on. And we noticed that, you know, due to the pandemic, due to supply chain issues, we're carrying forward a number of projects, which has been kind of frustrating for us overall. So our theme, once you take out the 2024 strategic plan projects, was we want to get things done next year that are achievable, have been communicated by the community and things that we can get some of these dollars spent down on. So a lot of the projects you see in the 2024 budget are projects we anticipate getting done next year. And hopefully, we'll be able to use some of those reserves on projects that will benefit the community. As always, our biggest capital expenses are spent on streets and traffic congestion. Back to the 2021 community survey, this is always the top two priorities of the community. The third one was to improve city communications, and I think we've done that very well since then. But again, maintain the quality of city streets, limiting traffic congestion are the two top goals of the community. So you'll see the bulk of our money for capital being spent on that. So diving right in, our biggest project next year is to make improvements to 19 Road. We have $6 million in the budget for this project next year, and that is excluding the $400,000 and right away acquisition that we have budgeted for this year. So by the time this project gets done, we'll anticipate maybe 6.4, 6.5 million dollars, depending upon where it comes in. The picture you see here, this is straight from Google Maps. This is the current condition of 19 Road as development has occurred and will continue to occur along 19 Road. We need to make some changes for safety reasons, but also CDOT has requested that we make a number of changes to 19 Road as well. So the new 19 Road will include and through intersection turn lane, pedestrian path. They'll widen the road as well. And then we have several drainage improvements to complete as these subdivisions come in. After right away, we anticipate that construction will begin in the fall and will merge over into 2025. And of course, with any project of this size, $6 million, over $6 million, we will continue to pursue grant funding. But we haven't found any specific opportunities that are a good fit for this project yet. But as the federal grant programs continue to be rolled out, we will always look for grants to offset the cost to the Fruta residents. We have been very successful in grants. I think tonight we have probably between South Mesa Streets, Maple Street Bridge, and then all of our sewer projects, we've probably four to five million dollars just in grants that we've received in the past three to four years. So we always try to leverage those dollars as best as we can to cut down the expense on our residents.
If I, if I could just add in that I know at the workshop, there was a question of how far on 19 Road. And I, I wanted to clarify because I think I might have said it wrong. It was just north. So it'll be just north of J point two and all the way down to six and 50. So I think I said point six, and that's been ringing in my head ever since. So I just wanted to clarify. It is, it is just north of J point two and then to six and 50.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mike. Uh, up next for capital projects, we do have two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to update the design of the Maple Street Bridge replacement. Again, this year, I believe we have around a hundred thousand dollars, but it's just for right away acquisition. We do anticipate receiving federal funds to fund, um, the total amount of this project when it does come due for replacement. So we do have to update the design to make sure it's in compliance with C dot standards, but also that we're going to be in compliance with all the federal standards as well. Such as, uh, wage requirements, Davis Bacon wage requirements, but also, um, buy in American, uh, parts and materials, uh, stuff like that. So two hundred and twenty-five thousand just for design, and we anticipate construction will begin in twenty twenty-five. This project has been recommended by both Senator Hickenlooper and Senator Bennett to receive congressional directed spending in the amount of one point seven five million dollars. And we will receive seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from Mesa County for this project. So when you see the two twenty-five, that's out of our Mesa County contribution. Uh, overlays, uh, this is one of the projects we asked ourselves, you know, what can we realistically get done next year? And how can we really get the best bang for our buck? So to speak, so we decided to put a, uh, a lot more money into overlays, because this is definitely our preferred method of, uh, treating our roads and streets. And also I think it really benefits the community overall. So you'll see an increase of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars for overlays next year. The streets identified for overlay include, um, the ones, uh, on the slide. Pinion Court, Fremont Street, K point four road to L Road, that's that little half street, um, we didn't do when we did the sidewalk improvements. K point four Pine Street to Carlotta Courts, and then some stuff along Lexington Way and Concord Drive, Abdu as well. So we actually, this year was unique to where we outs, um, contracted out our street evaluation system to a third party contractor, and we got the results of that. Our Public Works team is kind of going through those results. I believe they will be, be presented eventually. But, uh, these are the streets that have been, uh, designated for overlays based upon the results of that, um, uh, survey results from that contractor. Uh, we're also going to do a small sidewalk safety improvement at Paper and Sycamore. There is a small subdivision going in off Paper, um, right there. So we've thought, um, that this would be a good benefit with that subdivision going in. And the council's also heard about, uh, speeding along Paper. So what you see here, this is on Pine and Paper. It won't be, it won't look like this, but we'll add a crosswalk. They'll bring in the, uh, the sidewalks, um, add some traffic calming features, and we hope that we'll be able to get that done by summer of twenty twenty-four to help with speed, but also pedestrian safety on, uh, Paper as well. Installation of a self-cleaning restroom in downtown Fruta. So as our special events have continued to grow, even some of our, uh, fruit events, like Thursday night concerts, we've recognized that there's a need to have additional bathrooms in downtown. Bless you, Mr. Mayor, uh, in downtown Fruta as more and more people come to these events. So our Parks and Rec Department has been working on this, and they have recommended that we install a self-cleaning bathroom in downtown Fruta. The picture here is one, um, that was sent somewhere else. So this is essentially what it looks like. It's built somewhere else and shipped kind of as constructed to the organization can be placed, um, uh, where we decide to put it. Um, so we actually receive a significant amount of cost savings due to that, because it's not something that we have to build. We're not paying for any additional building materials. It's already been built, um, uh, before it gets shipped. We can also add any kind of artwork we want. The artwork you see on there, I can't really speak to that, but they said we can add the fruit of gear. We can add whatever this group thinks is appropriate, whatever our Parks and Rec Department thinks is appropriate.
You have a name already in mind? Yeah.
I'm going to keep my mouth shut.
Yeah, so, uh, and you'll see more and more communities are kind of moving to these self-cleaning bathrooms. There's one in, uh, Palisade. There's, uh, Grand Junction is going to start installing them as well. And that's because they're pretty close in cost to just a traditional non-on-made bathroom. So that's why we'd recommend moving forward with that. We have a total cost of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is for the restroom itself. Now we have a hundred thousand dollars for, uh, any design, utilities, permits, U water tap. And of course, our sewer tap, because Kimberly will not give me a discount on that.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
If, what would, I know you said something about the cost savings from building it. Um, what would it be anticipated if we built?
That's a normal, right, non-automated. Yeah, you know, I think we'll have a really good idea this Friday. Um, because we are bidding out Reed Park right now, and in there is a bathroom. We have some rough estimates, um, from FCI. They think anywhere between two to five hundred thousand dollars, depending upon finishes, um, kind of what you want to include in there. So we think it's pretty comparable to what it would cost, but then you get all these additional benefits, which I'll go over in some of these additional slides from getting the automated bathroom. But yeah, they, we won't, I think Reed Park will give us a good estimate. They delayed that bid because the people that were going to bid requested a delay. Um, but, uh, I two to five hundred thousand is roughly what FCI gave us. Is that right, Mark?
Yeah, yep.
And have we, uh, do we have a specific locations in mind already, or do we know where?
We have a few. We haven't made any decisions. I believe we were thinking about the parking lot across from Domino's, Kim's Auto, without losing any parking spots.
Oh, cool.
At least I don't think we'd lose any parking spots, but we'll, we'll play that by ear.
I will, I will say that, um, it's, it's tough to get an exact comparable of a, uh, boat. And Reed Park will probably be larger than what we would build comparable to this, but it'll give us, it'll give us a good example. Besides estimates, um, getting the actual, um, bids for that, uh, that'll be broken down by line items. If you remember when we were on the tour for the riverfront properties, there was a new bathroom being installed. I think it was Basalt?
Basalt.
Basalt, and Mark, uh, noticed that FCI was building that one, so we got the costs. Now every facility can have different, you know, additional features and things like that, but that was a fairly small brick building, you know, bathroom, and that was almost, it was just under nine hundred thousand?
About eight hundred thousand, yeah.
Eight hundred, that's sorry, eight hundred thousand for that, for that facility. Well, I don't know if there were, uh, we don't know of any, you know, exceptional additions to it, but, uh, uh, one of the things, Shannon's going to go through some of the, some of the pros and some of the cons of these, what's leaning towards why we're looking at the self-cleaning versus the traditional.
And the range varies so much because of the finishes. So if you're going with stainless steel, so you're avoiding the vandalism of porcelain breaking. You're going with vandal resistant wall. I mean, there's so many different finishes that will take that price up. So that was one of the things. They went with high-end finishes. Architecture, the art on the outside of the building, it was very extensive and the design for that was pretty substantial. So the construction was high, but also the finishes made it, um, that much higher. So it's really hard to figure out, do you do stick built for a two hundred square foot building? Do you do block? What do you do? There's so many decisions to be made on what's the most cost effective. But yeah, that's, that's what gives you that big range.
Is there a life expectancy on these?
On the
Are we talking like manufactured home versus stick boat? Like what?
So when I was talking to the manufacturer, they're all, um, they're not proprietary parts, so they're Siemens parts that you can get in the US, right? They're a standard part number that you can go and order. It's not something that's coming from overseas that will, are, you know, hard to get. So if a solenoid goes bad, anything goes bad with this, they, it will actually notify you and let you know what's going on, and it will, you can go change it out pretty easy. So I think uh, overall, I think there's a two-year warranty on the, the parts, um, and the building, I believe had a five-year warranty. Because it's pre, pre-made, uh, in a different location, so.
We don't know like, uh, like for the actual structure itself.
So I asked about maintenance fees and asked about when what others are looking at, because they've been around for a while. And I was like, what are wearing out? What are you seeing? What are you ordering? What are these folks looking for? And they haven't had that yet. So they're, they're not wearing out. They're not having major repairs or major fixes.
Mark, you said that they, there's a few that have been doing it for a while. What, what kind of a time span are we talking? Are we saying ten years?
I believe, yeah, ten years, yes.
At ten years, they're still holding that pretty.
And, and there's, some of the locations that these have been installed are in large festival areas that are seeing a lot of uses and and they're getting used often. So that's, um, yeah.
We're, we're, you're, what we've been seeing them in the past is they're new to this area, like Palisade and the junction about to put it in, but larger cities, California, you know, where there's, uh, they've been tested out for quite, quite some time and, and over, over the last decade at least. Especially in areas where, um, where there is a lot of use and there's where you have to actually have people, you know, lock the physical structures where you have some, some, some opportunities different with these. And because, uh, because of vandalism and because of some of the, the traditional uses in, in, in your downtown areas with, with restrooms, a lot of them, like where Grand Junction's putting it, they've actually had to keep that normal structure that they're replacing it with, that they've already have, they've had to keep that, you probably noticed over the years locked with porta potties outside. So they're looking at it from a standpoint of this is an opportunity to, to, to keep it open, and, and Shannon's going to go through some of those pros in this slide.
What you're saying is we probably should let Shannon go through.
No, no. No, these are great questions.
What the fruit of Lou's going to be?
Yeah, great questions and, uh, yeah, great information. So yeah, what are the pros of, uh, the self-cleaning restrooms, um, overall? Uh, less water consumption than the non-automated washrooms. Um, it's estimated to use half of the water for flushing and floor cleaning. Uh, the bowl is cleaned every use and floor is cleaned after every ten to fifteen uses. Uh, we also have remote monitoring, so I didn't know this, but apparently at the end of the night, our police officers are actually going and locking all of our bathrooms around Fruta, so this can be done remotely. Um, as Mark was discussing, it also will provide you if there's any issues with the bathroom, it'll send you notification of that, and hopefully it can be, um, uh, fixed remotely. And with that, with less, uh, with the monitoring, there's less daily onsite visits, supervision and less cleaning and traveling. And also there's no water heater, so, um, that saves some energy costs in the long run as well. There's a heater but no water heater, so it just puts out the cold water and cleans with the cold water. Um, cons, again, you know, anytime you have a structure or building, it still may require staff cleaning, um, at times. Facility could stay wet after cleaning. Um, you always have to worry about potential electronic failures. Uh, in the future, and also you will probably need some sort of redundant internet to make sure that you don't have any issues with the bathroom. If there were something to go wrong, the internet went out, you'd still have, uh, still have the ability to get noticed or get a notification for that. Generally for cost benefit, we have a cost in there, but since the costs are pretty close, I think we're going to hold on and hold off on doing a formal cost benefit until we get some better cost, but roughly we anticipate it's the same, um, price as the non-automated restrooms. These are numbers straight from the contractor, so based upon two thousand uses per month is estimated, we'll save about fifty-seven thousand gallons of water per year. Staff time roughly three to four thousand dollars a year based upon, you know, just cleaning, monitoring. We'll have the energy savings from having no hot water heater, and also the wrap that you saw is, uh, vandalism rate of materials. Hopefully that'll help out with any potential vandalism in the future, which unfortunately that does happen at our parks from time to time. Any other questions on this before moving on to different bathrooms?
How does it work if someone wants to have a wind-free night and sleep over? Like, how do, how do we stop that before?
I think it encourages people to turn over because it washes the walls, the floor, the toilet bowls, all as part of itself.
So as we lock it, it's not, we'll know if someone's in there.
Yeah, I believe so. Yeah, yeah.
So it knows when it's empty and is, is able to do that. That's not going to start when, I would be the lucky one. To get washed.
It has happened to me. I think I was on Palisade, it started on the walls, and I was like, what is going on? It's so odd. But that's kind of like your cue, because then it washes.
Oh, my gosh, I'm hanging out.
Yeah.
There's going to be like a sign that says, and Kate, like, I am one of the lucky who, who stuck at the Wildcat Car Wash, like, there's a sign in there that you can call if you get stuck in there.
Oh, yeah. I'm sure we can definitely, we can definitely add that, yes. That'd be pretty easy to add. Fully automatable, so I will make sure that we program that into the, the system.
I just want to point out, we're talking about having a bathroom requires dual internet connection.
Yeah.
It, it runs off of one, but I just want to make sure like that something doesn't happen if we don't, you know. It really just sends you, the best part about it, it, it will tell you when toilet paper is out. It will tell you when soap is getting low. It will tell you if there's a solenoid that's not working, like it notifies you, emails you, so you save staff time from going out and checking that. So when we get those requests that hey, toilet paper's out for this huge festival, we know prior to that. And then w- with automation, it saves on all the materials, all the soap, all the uses for that. So we can program how often it cleans, how often it sanitizes, how often. It's just a cleaner unit. You know, when we're cleaning right now, we could go into the building and the next person that uses it, it will be dirty for the rest of the day. Not knowing what had happened. So this ensures that after so many uses, it's going to be clean. It, it will provide a better product for, for everyone.
And just for pure transparency, I know the answer is obvious, but just stood out there. It's just one person unit at it, right?
No, this is a dual unit, so this has, um, two holes, um, and then the, the mechanical room, so.
So two people can use it.
What's the cost of, if the computer goes down? What's the cost of replacement?
You know, we don't have that information. I'm sure that's something that we could figure out and get back, um, to the council, but I, I don't have that information based upon the quote that was provided. Mark, do you have?
I don't.
We don't.
We could get that, that'd be
Sure. I'm really struggling with this. Um, next, another restroom, uh, we do have we may have to go get the screwdriver from across the hall. Uh, a hundred thousand dollars for the installation of a vault restroom, uh, at Snook's Bottom. This is something that we've needed for quite a while. We had to replace the porta potty this past year, and I think this would just be a good addition to Snook's, um, uh, as a whole, because it's probably something that we've needed. I'm so sorry, this is
Just for the sake of not understanding, what's vault? What is a vault?
Uh, it's Oh, oh. So a vault toilet is just, it's just a vault, so it, there's no running water or anything like that, so you will have to get that pumped out depending on the usage. So very similar to all the BLM trailheads to, yeah, yep. Anything you'd see, I think Devil's Canyon, Vault One, and then everything you see at Eighteen Road.
Yeah.
Cool. That's a hundred thousand dollars that will come from our conservation trust funds, which is a good use of those dollars, because they're meant for, uh, parks, open space and trails. Um, then we have a small building improvements project, uh, at the Civic Center, City Shops and the Fruit of Community Center. This is just to install key card access for staff areas at these buildings, but also upgrade the cameras at the community center as well. We have ninety thousand dollars total, sixty of that is the general fund contribution for the Civic Center and the City Shops. And thirty thousand is for the Fruit of Community Center. We've had some instances where people walk into staff offices because they're upset. It becomes confrontational, so we're just trying to limit anything that could potentially happen as a safety measure over here and also at the Fruit of Community Center. Cool, that is it for our new twenty twenty-four capital projects, um, moving into the re-appropriated projects. If nobody has any questions on other, those projects.
This is ninety thousand dollars of donation revenue. Like, we had a budget for this year, but it didn't happen. What's?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's a good one. So let me skip over to that. The ninety thousand dollars for the design of the Highway three forty underpass trail. If you remember, we were going to design, uh, one of two trails for the Cara Riverfront, and the Riverfront Commission let us keep ninety thousand dollars that they gave us for the Cook Pelly section of the Riverfront Trail, as long as we used it on a Cara Riverfront Trail item. So we, uh, budgeted ninety thousand for the design of a underpass trail at three forty and, um, uh, the river. Ninety thousand wasn't enough for that design, but we went and got eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars, uh, multimodal options fund grant, so two hundred and fifty is budgeted for that.
I think my last question for capital projects is, on page three forty-two, there's no budget for Reed Park. We have to roll that over, right?
Great question, yeah. So since we don't know the total, and that is in a future slide as well. Since we don't know the total, um, we will come back to council at the beginning of the new year, um, assuming the contract has been awarded and we'll reappropriate that. Hey, thanks, Mike. Is that a screwdriver? Oh, look at that, look at that. Uh, we will reappropriate that, um, and council will have to reappropriate that before we can spend those dollars. That's why you see like a zero dollar amount.
Uh, quick question. You mentioned that Hickenlooper and Bennett, uh, had the one point seven five million dollars in their appropriation bill. Do we know when that goes to the House?
So it has went to reconciliation. I can't I can't say for certain, because there's a lot of things going on in the United States Congress right now. That is working perfect. Yeah, thank you. I want to say by the end of the year, and we did have Congresswoman Bo Working perfect. Yeah, thank you. Um, I want to say by the end of the year, and we did have Congresswoman Boebert here, um, you.
She wasn't, yeah, it's part of that conversation. I just didn't know if you hadn't, I hadn't heard.
I have not heard and I have not heard from their staff as well, but we will wait and see.
Is there anything in addition that we can do to help, uh, keep her focused on that that you can recommend? Cause I know she's going to make cuts.
Oh, the Congresswoman. Yeah. I mean, her, her staff has been great to work with. Same with Bennett and Hickenlooper staff. Um, I really think that's how we got it kind of across just because of the relationships we have with them over there. So we can definitely ask and they've been pretty good. They've said it's by this point, it's went through reconciliation. They do understand that it will be some cuts. Um, but this is such a small dollar project compared to what you see for something other CDS. I want to say the centers combined got 172 million last year or something that they feel pretty good about it, but we'll keep on, uh, checking in with them and kind of going from there. I was very encouraged, um, when we met with her and kind of her opinions on potential next year projects. Um, she didn't recommend any of this here, but she recommended a lot for her district, which was the first time that was good to see. But she didn't make it seem like they would be competitive, uh, moving forward next year.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Mike, for the screwdriver. Uh, so South Mesa Street will be re-appropriated. We have 2.4 million dollars overall. Um, again, since this is CDOT funding, we do have to update our design. So we anticipate the design will be complete by mid 2024. We'll bid it out sometime next year and then construction will take four to six months, uh, following that. Uh, 16 Road Rail Crossing, this is one we keep on moving forward every year, um, largely dependent upon the railroad. We hope summer 2024, um, but we will see. And then the design of the Highway 340 underpass trail, as Council Hanson mentioned earlier, um, hopefully we'll get that done next year by August 24th, and then we can decide how we want to move forward with that, uh, trail. Um, another one that we should be wrapping up, construction is going to start soon on our lateral connection for the broadband middle mile project. I'm very happy with how this has turned out. Um, so far the CNL has been built and will be placed soon if it's not already been placed. Um, at our city shops facility, we do have people building out last mile internet, uh, to residents in Fruta. And by this time next year, we will be a gig city and people have access to symmetrical gigabyte internet service, um, at homes and at businesses. So very uh, happy to see that and happy to see that, uh, we'll join all the other communities and have, uh, gig options, uh, for, uh, residents and businesses.
Will that help with the automated bathroom?
I hope so. Yeah. Ironically, um, we're.
That's right.
That, that's a good point. Yeah. And we're, we're eventually going to create like a loop of fiber to all of our city facilities. And one part we'd like to hit is downtown Fruta. So we'll have fiber all along downtown Fruta. We'll probably own that as part of the middle mile. I'd love to put some access points out there eventually too. But right now we get this piece done, then we can kind of go from there. Um, this again is funded mostly through, uh, a grant from the Carrado Department of Local Affairs. But also the, uh, ARPA funds that we received that were specifically allowed for broadband.
But to add what Shannon's, uh, talking about in discussions with these groups and as we build the CNL and as, as, uh, private groups build the last mile. Um, we have, we are looking at what costs are to, to bring, one, uh, we are working on for all of our facilities because we have a, we have a current fiber connection, um, but it's old fiber. It needs, it needs an upgrade. We've, we've known that for a number of years. Uh, we'd like to create more of a loop to have better redundancy for, and when we say our facilities, it includes lower valley fire and the police department and the community center. This building, city shops, and then making sure that our wastewater reclamation facility has a good connection. Um, but as Shannon was mentioning, we're also looking at how we, in, in the process of doing that, we can bring more wireless internet to certain areas, public areas of the city. So where there are some wireless options. So we're looking at what that, what, what those costs would be or how that could be built in, uh, negotiated in. When you think about some of the, the larger parks, uh, some of the downtown area, things like that, especially where we have a lot of events, Reed Park, for example. When you have all these vendors, all these vendors now, and this is not the only reason, just for residents, when they're out, you know, in open space to have that connection is, is a, is a benefit. But, um, at all these vendors now are working with wire, you know, wireless payment systems and all those types of things. I mean, we have big events in the downtown. They're trying to get on F Works or this building's, you know, they're, they're anything they could best slope, any, anything they can grasp just to be able to take payments. And, uh, so it kind of is, it's good timing and working with them to be able to figure out future locations. So we've, we've given them a pretty detailed map to get, get the costs and, and there's also a lot of grant funding for broadband, like we're utilizing for this project, but to do expansion pieces to go after as well. Um, but like the, the beach property that we just toured, making sure that future locations and working with these providers as well separately from our system, but where new development will be occurring so that they're planning to reach out to those neighborhoods and build out to those as well. So there, there's a lot of things going on with in addition to and being looked for and funding options for, um, to build upon even just what we're, the current project that we have right now.
Mike, I want to add, I guess something that maybe to research would be like, we were talking about like vendors coming in town. Is there a way with that wireless to say, okay, there's a fee associated with using it for this, these two days. I mean, cause you, you're charging extra for electric when people come and charge for those extra amenities. You know, um, so it might be something to, to look at helping pay for.
Do you like hotels? Do where you got like, one, you can log on and use it at a certain level, but if you pay for like a.
Right.
Well, I've got a, kind of a bigger, higher level question with that. Are we looking at the city providing that internet service? Or are we looking at a private business prov- providing that service? Cause I do know in some states there are legal issues around that.
Yeah, we're not looking at being the provider, but often in Colorado, uh, where private providers provide internet to the city, they'll provide like at the community center, I mean, or like at this building, any, anybody from the public can get on wireless for free. We don't charge for that. Um, so doing that in some of our park spaces and some of our open spaces, but, but there are options that you can consider, such as council member Williams has, has stated where you can, you can look at different levels or how, how much you're, what you're offering. Cause at this building in particular, we got members of the audience that come to these meetings, they can get on the public without a password, but to get on a little bit faster, more secure network, there's certain passwords and, and certain things like that. So it, it, it's mainly for that, not being a provider, not, not necessarily selling it to businesses in any way.
I, I, I wasn't talking about that. I do know there are some legal issues about providing free wifi in parks and downtown areas.
Yeah. And to piggyback off something Mike said, you know, we will continue to look for, um, grant programs that can help out with that. There is a ton of grant funding that's available right now through both federal and state agencies that we are, um, researching as much as we can. This is a spreadsheet that we have. This is actually provided by the state. I want to share this. This is all IJA, which is the Infrastructure Investment Jobs Act and also the IRA, the Inflation Reduction Act. Grants that have come out. This is 400 lines of grant programs that we go through in our downtime. Um, just to see, just to see what might be good fits. And I'm not just like, not just like 19 Road. I don't go through all this. Like I'm looking for something specifically for 19 Road, but researching these grants, like what would be a good fit for Fruta overall, um, as a whole. One that's come up recently is the Car Energy Office provides like building audits. Um, test your windows, test all of that. We think it'd probably be very appropriate for this building to do that, but we're slowly going through this. This is a long list.
Setting ourselves up for failure.
Then assuming there's gaps, they help you fund improvements in the future. Yeah. But no, we've been spending a lot of time. This spreadsheet is, is funny because there's 400 lines. You total up this, this is 880 billion dollars with the grants fund that are currently available. So we're trying to work through as fast as we can, but unfortunately it's just something that we have to take some time and go through. Yeah. Cool. Uh, our last capital project is Reed Park, as Council Hanson asked. Thank you for that question. Um.
I thought you were saying that we're done with capital project.
Oh, no.
Questions.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I gotta get my question.
Oh, of course. Yeah. Yeah.
Apologies for ju- jumping.
Yeah, carry on. Um, bid is set to close this Fridays. That's why you see a dollar amount, a zero dollar amount in there. Uh, council will eventually approve the contract for Reed Park and then we'll reappropriate it next year, um, as well. I think that's kind of just cleaner. Um, last year I put some in there where we thought we knew the final cost, then we had some things come in late. So then we had to do a reduction appropriations. It's probably just cleaner if you guys reappropriate it at the start of the new year. Okay, that is it for capital projects. If we don't have any other questions.
Anybody have any questions on capital?
I just wanted to comment one more time on the, on the internet stuff and the public usage. I, I do really like that you guys are looking into that and I, and I would really like to continue that, like, kind of like the same vein of where we did the charging stations.
Right.
I could see 10, 15 years from now, that's just going to be a normal thing.
Oh, yeah.
So we definitely want to be ahead of that curve. So I appreciate you guys really digging in on that. That's, that's good ideas.
Yeah, appreciate it. And yeah, we're, we're super excited that all of this is kind of coming to, uh, fruition as well, because it's something we've talked about for a while. And now we have, uh, you know, contractors, private companies in here, you know, putting in that service and also others that want to come in as well. So I think it just ultimately leads to a better product uh, for our residents and for our businesses. So thank you.
Yeah, I, yeah. And I just wanted to add about Reed Park and, and maybe apologize if covered it when I was getting this really good toolkit here. Um, the, uh, uh, you know, the original bid opening was, was supposed to be the 13th and that, that got extended one week because when we had prior to a bid opening, you typically have, um, a, a scheduled time where people ask questions. Unfortunately, we're getting a lot of interest and some of those questions were pretty technical related to, uh, engineering and, and all that. So when we gave that information back, we realized that the turnaround time with that new information would be too short to meet like the Friday with those clarifications that were asked. So we extended it one week so that we, because our, our goal is to get the best bids we have that we're not having to, you know, and then we sort through them. So yeah, I apologize if that was covered, but, um, uh, anyway, that, that, that's why we extended one week. Uh, we're excited to get that one open so we can find out some real timeframe, some real costs, uh, make those adjustments and get that project moving is, is our hope. So.
Great. Uh, core service and delivery. This just touches upon some highlights, um, regarding the community goals, but also kind of trends we're seeing across all funds. Um, as we were discussing earlier, uh, the number one and number two priority for residents is to continue to improve our, uh, quality of city streets and also limit traffic congestion. So we do spend a lot of money on street and sidewalk projects. Um, in the 2024 budget, you'll see this, um, not just in capital projects, but in our public works, general fund as well. We have a total of $150,000 for sidewalk improvements. That does include that paper and sycamore improvement, but just a hundred thousand dollars to continue our sidewalk replacement program, which has been a great success. We have $210,000 for chip sealing. Um, this is an increase of 60,000 from the prior year, but this is to double chip seal South 19 Road on the south side of the interstate because, um, desperately needs that. Uh, each year we spend about $72,000 on street striping as well. So we will continue that into next year. And then we have $85,000 set aside for miscellaneous patching repairs of our roads, um, and bridges, uh, anytime throughout the year.
On the patches and repairs though, that we, do we contract that out or is our staff?
Uh, I think it kind of depends on what it is. A lot of things like we can probably do on our own, but a lot of the stuff too, we do contract chip sealing. We just, um, did it jointly with Mesa County, street striping. Um, we contracted it out this year, I'm pretty sure. So it kind of just depends on what exactly it is and kind of staff time, staff expertise for some of that stuff. Yeah. I think we do a lot in-house of those miscellaneous repairs and the patching.
I, I, I would like, I think this is good for just a little bit of his, not far, far back historical, but our recent history, um, we, uh, we used to receive from Mesa County either a hundred thousand or 200,000 a year that we would, that we would combine with a hundred thousand or 200,000 that the city had, and that would go towards things like overlays. And I'm looking at Margaret because she was, she was more, uh, familiar with that. And then it kind of started fading out and then we no longer have received that for a number, for, um, probably the last five years, I believe somewhere around that. At the time, then we, then we do those surveys and every survey has had the same kind of results, right? Like, um, we've had, fortunately, we've had very positive results and high, and high ratings in our service delivery and those types of things. But we always ask that other question of where would you like us to prioritize funds if we're able to put funds to other play, uh, other things and, and roads is always, uh, streets and roads always, always top by far. And what we, some of you will remember, um, uh, you know, a handful of years ago, as we were losing that money from Mesa County and we were trying to, at the same time, we're seeing that that kind of feedback. Um, there were a few years where in essence, if you, if you follow the numbers, we were falling, we, we weren't in, increasing and we were, we were staying flat or decreasing slightly. Um, fortunately, uh, we've, the last couple of years, we've been able to put a little bit more, but the, but now we're kind of getting back to that a higher level where sometimes it's better to do more projects at once, um, than, than just a few each year. Um, but at the same time, we're trying to get to a level where we're keeping all the roads at a certain level continuously. So you know, you're always maintaining roads at different times. Um, I, I look forward to, we will have a presentation for you all related to, once we have the final, we, we had hoped that it would completely be done. We're just trying to go through the edits and things like that, um, from the company that we paid this year. Um, we were pleasantly surprised just in general. Um, we were, we had a little bit of a worry. We've been doing it on our own. Is it going to come back and it's going to show most of our roads? But, but, um, we're in a, we're in good shape, but that, but that, that ends quickly if we don't keep up with it. Um, so, uh, we're, we're finally with this budget and I would say this year's budget as well, getting back to where we're putting in a significant, uh, you know, a, a significant amount that if we keep up with that, we're doing really well on those ratings. Um, but we had a few years where we weren't, you know, we were, uh, we were struggling to, um, because when you were used, when we were used to maybe 400,000 and we were only paying 200,000 of that, it is, we had to start making up for that. Anyway.
Great. Thanks, Mike. Other trends across all funds, um, you will notice there's a new line item in our budget this year. It's called software subscription. Um, we are held to standards by the government accounting standards boards. And every once in a while they release, uh, guidance and basically we have to adopt standards from them. And one of the new ones that was, uh, implemented last year is that we have to now, um, account for what's called internet or service-based IT agreements separately in our financial statements. Or SPITAS is what they like to call them. Um, so basically that's any, um, that's any sort of internet technology agreement where we lease, you know, the software from them for less than a year. So your Adobe Creative Cloud, um, geez, I can't think of more off the top of my head. We have several, uh, Adobe Creative Cloud, Granicus, um, our, our, uh, some of our planning software as well, cloud permit. Um, we have to account for those separately in our budget. In the past, those have been put in a line item called service contracts. So you'll see service contracts decrease significantly and you'll see that software subscriptions increase, um, quite a bit. I can show you like a super quick example if this group is interested in one. Okay. Let me pull up my budget. Um, and you'll see I.
Me too.
Yeah. Don't worry. We all knew that you were doing it.
Uh, so. Yeah. Hey, here's our updated budget. Um, so this was just uploaded last week. Um, as always, we spend a ton of time, um, adding bookmarks. So please use those. So our time is not wasted. Um, I can pull up a few. Yep, yep. So just in our finance department, let me scroll down. Um, also for every department, every program, we have the last four years, we have mission, goals, performance measures, responsibilities, all of that. And we actually provide our line item budgets. Yeah. So right here you'll see service contracts was 28,650. It's now down to $8,000, but the. Yeah, yeah. Um, but then the software subscriptions is 41,000. There is a $10,000 difference there. It's because we're upgrading our accounting system as this city council's already approved. Um, so you'll see this there. I categorize them. You have 4,300 level expenses, which is these first two numbers, purchase professional services. Compared to purchase property services, 4,400. So you'll see some differences there.
Shannon, you're saying we're paying a little bit more now to update, but that.
Yeah.
Budget line item will, won't stay 41,000.
Uh, that will be our new cost. That's for our accounting software. Yeah, we're moving to a cloud base. We've had a lot of issues with our current version, um, but that also includes some other software to like, uh, manage our leases, stuff like that. So it's not all that, but yeah, I think that'll be a good, um, a good, uh, uh, transition for our finance department, uh, next year.
That's a good, that's a good point to make is that you'll see two things with those. One, there's a new line item and then so you're essentially changing from one line item to another and you have those changes. But then there's new software that we're, that we're adding in, right? So we're the financial system's new, so that, that's an increased cost. We have a new system for municipal court. We have a new
Yeah.
system for, uh, short-term rentals. We have the new system that actually was in this year's, but you know, continues for planning and development. Um, I'm. Uh, I'm probably missing another, but it's amazing how many subscription, what's sorry. Yeah. Um, yeah, our website, uh, the all the things that are tied to Muni code, which is not only the website, but it's it's when you want to see all the meeting agendas, uh, minutes, packets, how we put the agendas together is a system where everybody can do the reviews separately. Uh, you know, that for many years we were doing the emailing cover sheets and you know, shared folders. So um, super helpful, really save a lot of time. But it is a big, you know, a- as you go, you know, it's a, you know, these are ongoing expenses for ongoing services and 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 work we've been doing.
Builds efficiencies.
It does.
Do others.
Does there? That, you know, the it's been great. We've we've had certain services for many years. I mean, work order systems and all those types of things, but um, so you'll see two, right? There's increases based on the new, the new softwares. And then there's the the flip flop of a of a line item of of the ones we've already had.
And it's just another line item accurately or more um, accurately represents kind of what we're paying for certain things. So that's always never a bad thing as well. Um, I caveat this next one. Inflation is slowly slowing down. Um, the state provides an inflation estimate for the end of the year each year. This is done by two agencies. The uh, Caral Legislative Council and also the Caral Office of State Planning and Budgeting. Um, for the past several years, we've seen some pretty significant um, inflation um, increases. Last year ended at eight percent overall. Um, this year they're predicting a increase of five percent, which is down from eight percent last year. Um, but this is also up from March when they thought initially uh, inflation would be about four point three percent. So slowly creeping up. Um, so we are still seeing increased costs for our normal services, goods, um, all of that as well, but it's not as significant as it has been in the past. Um, other trends you might see supply and utility costs. I'm sure everyone remembers in February when they got their gas bill. Um, how significant that was. Um, Kimberly and I were actually just going through our utility expenses. We paid seventeen thousand dollars of our eighty five thousand dollar budget for gas um, in February this year. Um, so you'll see some increases in our supply utility cost, but we do expect those to hopefully flatten out um, in the future, especially now that hopefully some of that uh, issues with gas and Excel are um, uh, alleviating. And also personnel data, which uh, Mike has already shared with uh, this group. Um, we saw an eight and a half percent market increase in our car municipal league data. Again, hearing from other government agencies, it's kind of, it seems like this could be the last year we'll see eight percent. It's closer to four or five moving forward. So yeah, those are kind of just trends we're seeing across all funds that impact our ability to provide core services. Questions on that before I move over to enterprise funds? All right, seeing none. Um, we have a few enterprise funds to cover. Um, just as a reminder for this group, our enterprise funds are funds that are funded mostly through user fees and by law cannot be subsidized more than ten percent per taper. Um, so this is stuff where, you know, people get a service and in exchange for that service, they pay a fee. Um, so our trash fund, irrigation funds, sewer fund as well. Uh, so starting off with the trash fund, uh, we do have one point two million dollars in revenue and expenses um, for next year. Um, as per our contract with waste management, uh, they do allow for a inflation adjustment each year. So the inflation for last year was six point seven percent. Um, down from, I think we had an eighteen percent increase last year. So that's uh, good to see that we're not seeing such significant jumps. Um, so about seven percent increase. But then in twenty twenty four, we have three new programs and also in twenty twenty three, we have the spring cleanups, not new, but it's one we'll continue to do. It's been a great benefit to the community. We have our leaf pickup, which is starting this November. We actually just got the dates today, so I sent them over to Ciara. Um, see if there's any issues with those dates. We have two November, one in early December, so hopefully that'll kind of cover all of the period of leaves. And then they will also provide us with a holiday dumpster. Um, or a dumpster after the holidays for any additional trash that they may have. No questions on trash fund? I can move on to irrigation fund or counselor handsy?
Trash.
Sure.
Why are we showing a two percent decrease in cer- in um, revenues and expenses?
In the trash fund?
Hmm, I would anticipate that it's
Yeah, that should be, that should be an increase.
I know like the sewer you have going up three percent.
Yeah.
And you'd you'd expect that the sewer or the trash fund would be
Oh, yeah.
consistent with that. It looks like we're just showing twenty four budget, the same as the twenty three budget, but um, twenty three is going to be bigger than both.
Let me double check.
Four oh six.
Oh, yeah. So, oh, I do apologize. This, let me double check this. Oh, so my apologies. This graph right here was not updated, which happens when you're rushing to get this done. Um, before you go on paternity leave. And and this line item graph was updated. So the line item graph is correct, but the summer graph uh, is not. So we'll get that updated in future. Uh, graphs, apologize about that.
So four ten's a better reflection, which
Yep, yep.
Much more sense.
Yep.
Percent increase.
Yep. Seven percent increase. We generally round those up. We also have five hundred or not five hundred, yeah, five hundred dollars in single-use bag fees. If you guys have any ideas for that, we can always discuss that at a later date.
Drop the maternity leave.
Right? Sorry. Hey, I gotta use what I have, you know? I was. I was rushing to get this done, so I apologize. Uh, irrigation, no range. Uh, irrigation fund, no rate changes in twenty twenty four. Um, really no revenue changes as well. We do have a two percent increase in uh, expenses. Uh, mostly due to the purchase of capital equipment, which is the irrigation trash cleaners, which is replacing the two we have. Um, which removes debris from the GBIC main irrigation canal for the water enters the Fruta system.
Sorry, can you go back one slide?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, no worries. Any other questions on irrigation?
Why are we going down on salaries?
Uh, you know, that one
Down everywhere is going up.
Yep.
Eight, ten, thirteen, eleven percent.
Yeah.
Going down eleven.
Yeah, that's a good question. So we actually um, had a few salary changes and we had some personnel changes. We had employees that were assigned to the irrigation fund. Um, prior to, we hired a new maintenance worker last year, so we actually went down on overall hours for the irrigation fund and their time was reassigned to the sewer uh, fund and also uh, mountain water as well. So it it is showing a decrease in salaries, but um, that's just because the salaries have been assigned to other funds. We have some employees, they their time gets charged to three different funds. So like in our utility department, they may um, have funds associated with irrigation fund, but then they may also um, have some of their salary charged to sewer. But then they may also have some charge to the general fund, like Kimberly is a great example, forty nine percent general fund, forty nine percent sewer, one, two percent irrigation.
Anything, you're capturing things good for going or just with, especially like looking at overtime.
Yeah.
It looks like you have fun going up and down between a thousand and six thousand bucks, seems like
Yeah.
Every year and and you're bringing that back down.
Yeah, that's always kind of dependent upon kind of issues. We see last year was especially a really bad year uh, for irrigation. Um, so that is something we could um, definitely uh, bump up. I'll have to look at that estimate again, but yeah, it's kind of just varies based upon the quality of water that we're seeing. And this year was especially bad, especially the start of the year with all that snow melt. Yeah. And I will like definitely a lot of credit to our public work staff. Like last year, they engineered this um, fan looking thing that scrapes um, kind of all the water going into some of the canals. That's helped out a lot, but it kind of just depended upon some of the water we're getting from GBIC, which is the Grand Valley Irrigation Company. A good question. Yeah. Cool. Uh, my last uh, fund to cover tonight is the sewer fund. Um, overall, we see a, we will see a decrease in revenue and expenses um, due to the completion of one-time projects out at the plant. Um, I put great job public works because um, although we're not done yet, hopefully it'll be done soon. We are crossing off a number of projects out the plant that need to be done for a while, and we're finally getting those wrapped up. The biggest one being the H two S uh, project. We replaced several manholes and uh, collection lines that have been deteriorated uh, due to H two S gas going out to the plant. Uh, that project has come along very well. We also completed the aeration or will complete the aeration project um, before the end of the year, which will allow us to operate both ditches at the plant at the same time for when capacity does reach that much where we have to do that. Um, I think that's between the two, three, little over three million dollars in projects we will complete this year and a lot of that was funded through grants and ARPA funds. So you'll see decreases in overall expenses and revenues just to to completing those.
I will, I will say, these aren't the most fun projects or probably the ones we uh, you know, that get as much attention. Um, but there's a huge relief. I I think uh, Kimberly and and I and and many.
That's a good one. Huge relief, I love.
Huge relief for uh, the H two S project to be wrapping up. Um, two Saturdays ago, we had, uh, it's a contracted project, but uh, to do that, uh, you've seen some of the pictures in the weekly update of these massive manholes, but from the the major lift station, what we call the I seventy lift station, that's kind of at the crossroads of the riverfront trail. And then the little salt wash trail or right near there. Um, that pumps all the sewage, you know, to the the uh, from Fruta to the wastewater reclamation facility. And all those manholes going going up were replaced and um, and this has been years in the making. Uh, I mean, we've been dealing with how to adequately address the H two S levels. Um, and and it, because it's not just an easy fix. We've we've had to do pilot studies. We've had to do um, multiple uh, engineering groups. Uh, we've had come in and and you know, do with the pilot studies and then and then fully engineer how to how to deal with this. Um, while they were replacing all the manholes, we had to um, create a, I'm forgetting the word here. Uh, we had to bypass the, all this, all the sewage um, from that main line. And two Saturdays ago, um, even though it's contracted, we had our crews go in uh, from midnight to three AM to help make sure that 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 bypass was was, they were able to stop the bypass and get it back into the the new lines. And uh, so when some of us were at that religious freedom thing, and you know, I had found out that early that morning, you know, Kimberly didn't wait, so three AM I got the text, but uh, that we were uh, the, which I was happy to get, we uh, we knew that the bypass was done and and you know, so there's been, uh, I know Kimberly's had a lot of sleepless nights. I'm sure Terry has and some of our collections, but it's uh, you know, it was a, it was a big issue, the the levels of H two S, but to be able to address it and finally see it kind of come into completion and the the group that we contracted has done a phenomenal job. They've been on schedule and it's been one of the um, well, it's been long in the making to start this final project. This final project is has has moved along um, a little bit faster and just as as we had hoped, so that it's been great. So.
When will we know, like, uh, a monitor or monitoring of the levels in there where they should be? I mean, or?
Yeah, that's, that's one thing. We were just talking about that and kind of looking, looking ahead. I don't have the the final answer yet, but we were just having that discussion because we still need to. They get, uh, there's still some things to wrap up. And then there was the the component that's a part of the plant that was added as well to do. Um, I guess, would you call it aeration or the bio? Yeah, the the filter. Um, so there's always levels of H two S and that's normal, but what, once we have that functioning over a period of time, we'll be able to monitor and then see you know, how those levels are changing, how successful it is. Yeah. The other, the other part is even with the levels, our old manholes were concrete. And so um, when they removed them, they started to crumble. I mean, it was, it was pretty, pretty pretty bad. Fortunately, they were intact enough as as while they were there, but the new are PVC, and so they don't, they're not susceptible to the gas. Um, so there's a lot of benefit in the long run with the new system that we have compared to the old system, but we do want to monitor those and make sure that it's functioning well. Yeah.
Yeah, super happy with how that turned out. We were bypass pumping eight hundred thousand gallons of sewer a day.
Thank you for your diligence.
Yeah.
In that.
Yeah. Great to have those uh, wrapped up soon and uh, have those
Of course you do.
That seems like a lot, but.
Uh, revenues for the sewer fund, we have five point four million dollars. Again, this is a decrease of thirty two percent compared to estimated actuals. This is just due to the completion of those projects. Expenses, five point two million, a decrease of twenty six percent overall. You'll see a um, surplus in the sewer fund mostly because uh, we had to pull from the reserves restricted for equipment at the plant this year um, to replace the vertical drum mixers. So we'll slowly start repaying, not slowly, we'll probably be done in two years, start repaying the reserves that we pulled from to replace those uh, vertical drum mixers at the plant. So that money will go into uh, reserves, the excess. Uh, three percent rate increase is budgeted for next year. Um, this is one of the graphs that we like to point the community to whenever they have questions about their sewer. Um, this is basically how much your monthly fee and what does it pay for out at the uh, uh, as far as sewer. Um, the biggest one uh, expense there, you have fifteen of your fifty two, fifty five goes to treatment. Fifteen percent or seven and a half dollars goes to collections. Uh, seven eighty nine or eight dollars goes to capital, uh, five dollars for administration. But then a third of this goes to uh, debt service because we are still paying on the debt of that facility. We'll be paying on it until twenty thirty two. Um, overall, uh, decreased revenues just due to completion of the capital projects and also usage of grant funds as well.
When that debt is paid off, what does that do to that fee?
Yeah, well, we'll decide then. Yeah, I think um, we do have a lot of needs out there. We're also looking to how we can fund other capital projects that are on the needs assessment. Um, so we'll look into that, but I can't necessarily say definitively now, but it's probably a discussion we'll have in the future. Uh, next year, uh, Kimberly is wasting no time and we're continuing on finishing up with a number of key sewer projects. Uh, we have three total projects throwing one point five million dollars. We also have two hundred and seventy two thousand in capital equipment. Miscellaneous capital equipment for our collections and our uh, reclamation facility. Uh, the first uh, one is the replacement of the Kingsview Lift Station at two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Um, that's been uh, deteriorating for the last couple of years, so it's probably due for replacement. So next year will be when we'll have budget to that. We do have about, I want to say four to five hundred thousand dollars left of ARPA funds, so we'll use two hundred and sixty of those for the specific projects. If, if you remember, we don't have to spend those dollars uh, until the end of, I think, twenty twenty six, so we have to have them appropriated and designated by the end of twenty twenty four. Uh, our biggest project next year is to start the replacement of the downtown service area sewer line. Um, this includes the installation of a new fifteen or eighteen inch PVC sewer line from Greenway Drive boring under the railroad into a new manhole in downtown. Um, this will be a phased project just due to the size of the project. So right now we have a million dollars set aside in the budget. That's split between energy impact grants and also funds that we get for investment fees. So anytime someone pays a sewer tap, we budget those separately so we can use them for when we need to expand the sewer line or expand capacity at the plant.
I'll just add in that there's, this could be one that we talk about a little bit more as as we proceed. Um, obviously, uh, we're going after a DOLA grant. Uh, but if we have savings in some of these other sewer projects and we have some of those ARPA funds that we're able to to increase our match and ask for more from DOLA, because we're not asking for the maximum as we have budgeted right now. But if we have those savings of funds that can basically be used for sewer projects, we could we could do a longer stretch of that, because that, this will be a multi-phased approach um, for that sewer. So just a heads up that just depending on how some of those um, sewer funds uh, play out, which could go either way, but if they're, if we're on the on the better side and we can add more to that match, we could be requesting more from DOLA and increasing that budget, only if there's savings from other other projects.
Yeah, and this is a map kind of showing, this is this uh, square right here. Um, is where we'll add the new sewer line. You'll go under the railroad tracks. Um, and then how far it will go. The downtown line is probably where we need the bulk of our replacements left. We do have some orangeburg still um, in there as well, which is susceptible to the uh, to the H two S gas. Um, so kind of see the phased approach and kind of what will be included in future budgets as part of this project.
That's a tear up the street, not a directional boring budget, correct?
Kimberly? Yep, yep. Yep, most likely. Uh, this is the service area for the sewer line replacement. So you can kind of see um, pretty big service area for this specific sewer line. Um, it goes, yeah, a lot of uh, downtown. Believe that's Pine Street right here and then over here to uh, six and fifty over to Triangle Park. Uh, last one, rolling forward, the replacement of the sewer line along South Mesa. This is an orangeburg line. Um, so we have two hundred and forty thousand dollars uh, as part of this project. Um, and again, that will bid sometime next year. It's continued from this prior year and construction will probably take four to six months. Uh, but we'll get that replaced with a new updated sewer line and hopefully we won't have any issues with that um, as far as H two S gas uh, in the in the future. Uh, Mr. Mayor City Council, that concludes my presentation. Always happy to Mr. Mayor, City Council, that concludes my presentation. Always happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do you have any questions that they haven't already asked?
Yeah. Are we talking public works tonight?
Yeah, yeah.
Grease through that fast. With the sewer fund before I go to uh, public works. Is there a reason why salaries are only up five and four percent?
In the sewer fund?
That's similar to the trash. I just want to make sure that we were not.
Yeah, yeah. I'd have to check. Um, we did have some retirements um, this year. So generally when it comes to personnel, I budget how much um, the new, how much those positions are making. We do have more maintenance workers uh, that have been hired compared to our traditional heavy equipment operators. So with that, there comes some um, salutary or salutary, that's not a word, um, salary adjustments um, to where they might be lower. I'm, I'm just winging it up here. Um, but I'd have to check. So for every, every time we hire someone, I input their current rates. Their health insurances, any allowances that they have as far as taxes and whatnot. And sometimes that will bring down um, the benefit expenses if we're replacing people that have been with this city for a while. We've had some long-term retirements recently. Our public work superintendent was with the city for, I believe, over twenty years. We've had some crew leaders retire recently and we also have had a difficulty fill those higher level roles like the um, uh, the heavy equipment operator. So we're hiring maintenance workers twos or one and twos to hopefully eventually promote to those roles. So yeah, the salary is really dependent upon kind of who's in place. So that may fluctuate a few percentage points because of that.
Last question before I move to public works.
Sure.
On page three ninety-seven, it looks like we have negative interest.
Oh.
I'd love to know how you figure that out. That'd be awesome.
Is that the debt?
Yeah, it's on the debt. We've got some negative interest. We have interest income happening three ninety-seven.
Oh, this is uh, based upon the refinancing of the loans. Yeah. So when we refinance the loans, we actually saved a lot based upon the initial interest. So I think this is just the difference uh, between the two. From our in- initial interest amount, principal amount compared to when we refinanced it, which I think was two years ago. So it decreases our overall payment, uh, total payment for the upcoming years. Margaret, you want to add anything to that?
You'll have to go to the microphone.
When the authority.
Don't worry, don't worry, I'm here.
When the authority refinanced the bonds that underlined this loan, um, when we redid our debt server schedule, they did not reduce the principal amount. What they did was resulting in a credit and the interest at the end of the term of the loan. So that's why you see that negative.
Thanks, Margaret.
Yeah, you said it better.
Onto the public works. I think I should have a few questions here.
Of course.
Mountain water, not that it's a whole lot. I'm just curious with, with all the.
Yeah.
We've had your, this year you're looking to spend around twenty-four thousand, next year forty, over forty thousand.
Yeah, a lot of that is due to um, uh, pipe repair for Enic Lake. So we didn't have that included in this year's budget, uh, because we weren't sure where we were going to go uh, with that. But um, if there's no changes to Enic Lake, we do need to budget. I think it's about ten thousand dollars, I don't know, twelve thousand dollars on water line repair. For Enic and also um, some capital equipment as well, but that will definitely spend. We didn't spend as much this year because we were kind of waiting to see what would happen with the mountain water properties. But I think next year we have ten of that twelve thousand dollars just designated for Enic Lake.
And then it looks like we're going up uh, oh, ahead with uh, maintenance.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is that where we were taking the two seasonal?
Yeah.
Have you guys done a, an analysis that we asked for?
Yeah. Um, so yeah, that was something I was going to cover during personnel, but we can definitely.
Oh, that's.
Oh, no, no, I'm, I'm super happy. Yeah. So we have uh, in Parks and Rec, this is happening in Parks and Rec. And in public works, we do have a number of seasonal and permanent part-time positions. We've been having difficulty filling those seasonal positions this year. So public works requested that we convert um, two of the seasonal positions. To a full-time to help with recruitment and um, filling that role. Generally, we budget, I want to say twenty-five to thirty thousand for seasonals. They don't get benefits. They just work um, uh, forty hours a week. For six months. So it's about um, a thousand forty hours. Um, so about fifty thousand for a total cost of the two seasonals. Fifty to sixty, depending upon what they're hired at. Um, but we're replacing that with one full-time maintenance worker, which is, will probably cost us about sixty thousand. Always depends on benefit allowance. Um, for our health insurance, we, it varies like our lowest cost health insurance. If it's just employee only costs nine thousand dollars, whereas if you have a family health insurance, it costs the city twenty-three thousand dollars. So it kind of just varies on some of their elections. But uh, yeah, I think at the end of the day, it'll probably cost us additional twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars. But it will help with much needed recruitment. We've been down people in public works and in parks kind of all year. So you've probably seen um, some gaps because of that, but I think being able to offer someone a full-time job, be able to offer someone benefits. Cause we do have very competitive benefits will help fill that role.
I would just add in, it's, it's definitely not a, just this year um, challenge. It's kind of been, I would say about since the, since the pandemic started. Maybe the year prior, we were seeing a little bit of it. We've always seen a bit because we'll get people that, we'll get some great workers. But if they can get a more permanent job somewhere, then, then we might not get them for the whole season. But definitely since the pandemic, we've been kind of waiting it out thinking, because ideally it worked, it worked great when we had, you know, uh, certain amount of seasonals that we could work forty hours for six months and then um, uh, but every year. We just keep running into more of those issues, which then puts people into overtime or starts burning people out or so. We're definitely feeling like we've, we've, I think we, we did a conversion in one of those areas, this I think in parks are already in the past. But um, but yeah, we're, we're seeing this as a, a more attainable way to actually have people working. We have made some changes, not, I know this is different from, from your question, but you know, one of the changes we had this year. Was one of the duties that we had seasonals doing for, for examples in parks, um, not public works. But it used to be, you know, really uh, picking up trash at all the different locations. And we, we moved that from uh, we changed that to a contracted service because it, we can, we can spend more time with the people we have. On the things that require more training and longevity and then, and that's actually been working really well. So we've been trying to be creative at different ways to handle and what's best and um, uh, but yeah, I think you answered the, the other part already.
We're not a.
It was just interesting to, that post-COVID.
Yeah.
Hiring is a lot different than three and, and I'm seeing it in my, in my consulting uh, personally and it's interesting. It's like, really? There's that big of a difference? But it is, I see it in my clients as well.
Yeah, absolutely. And we're not.
Actually that it's sustaining, right? Like it's kind of one of those, is this is going to be an anomaly for a year or two, but I mean, yeah, it's continuing.
Going three years later and it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not afraid to like try something different too. Um, Mark and I definitely laugh about this. We converted a seasonal to permanent part-time last year. And now we're converting permanent part-time to seasonal next year. Just because people, they mean, do they want to work year round at less than thirty hours a week? Or do they want to work for six months of forty hours and get a second job that's similar? And after that, it's just kind of varies upon who's interested in those positions at the time. There isn't a lot of budgetary impact to that. There's some, but it's pretty minimal. But we can't be like afraid to try different things to help with our staffing needs, I think, like.
I'm just curious, uh, street light and repair and improvements. We're just.
Oh, yeah.
Fifteen grand versus we spent hundreds of dollars in the past.
We have been told by our good friends at the car department of transportation that we need to replace a street light that was hit along I seventy and repair it. So that's the bulk of that expense.
Yay. The one that was laying there for a long, 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 long time.
It's our responsibility.
I'm very familiar with that one. Yay. It's our responsibility, but yay for it being replaced.
We will replace it. I mean, it is low dollar. I mean, not low dollar, but it is something that we're, we weren't quite sure about whose jurisdiction that is, but.
That was something we learned, not necessarily anticipated originally.
Seventy, but it's not our right away, but we.
But we do have to, yeah. We did not, we, yeah, we had to, we had to really look into that to figure out if, if that was the case. But it is.
So are they going to repair the fence as well or is, or can it just go away? Or like, what's the plan for that? Is that our jurisdiction that there's?
I think we'll slowly find out, but I'm not.
That's, I'm pretty sure that's C dots. I know we've had discussions. We haven't gotten any verification of when they're.
Really unsightly.
Right.
Furniture and, listen.
Oh, yeah.
Furniture and equipment, we've been in the below ten thousand quite a bit and then we're going to a hundred and eighty-three.
Yeah. Yeah. Great question. Um, so I try to put a summary of all capital equipment um, kind of right here. So this is.
It's you have.
Yeah, this is, oh yeah, let me look. One seventy-one. Um, so in each uh, fund, department and program. We have the fund summary, the department summary, then the program summary. So you'll probably see there's a lot of redundancy. Which hopefully we can maybe cut down eventually, but I think it is super helpful right now. Um, but I'll put like an overall, overall summary of the big changes. And capital equipment is in all of them. So in the general fund summary, you'll see all of our capital equipment that we will purchase. Public work summary, we'll see what's specific to public works. And then uh, in each program, you'll see that as a specific line item. So capital expenses for next year in public works, and this is on page one seventy-one. Um, and this is just in the summary. So again, summary, no, fun summary, department summary, program summary. You'll see we have hundred thousand sidewalk repairs. That's not new. Uh, new capital equipment is a hundred twenty thousand dollars for a backhoe. We have twenty-five for a grinding machine for uh, road maintenance. We actually used it out here to uh, strip off the paint for our electric vehicle charging stations. And also our north parking lot. We had a demo that we didn't have to pay anything for, but it turns out it's like a really good uh, product. So we're purchasing that. And then we also have to replace the fire doors down at the front desk for planning and finance. So that's the bulk of the new capital equipment. And then each year we also have replacements um, that we budget for with our surf dollars. Which stands for capital equipment replacement fund. We have a hundred and twenty thousand dollars budgeted for a crack sealer. Then fifty thousand dollars to replace a road maintenance truck. So that's the, that's the bulk of it. And I also provide, we also provide a line item summary. Of the department here. So you'll see, scroll down, capital right here. We have hundred thousand for sidewalk replacement. Mobile equipment is that new um, or is the uh, surf replacements, which is the existing vehicles we already have. And a hundred and eighty-three, five is for the uh, new furniture and equipment. Yeah, six thousand dollar increase, or six thousand percent increase. Uh, last year we bought a trailer and I think so that was pretty low cost compared to that. We do have the two uh, dump trucks, uh, the three thirty. That hopefully we'll receive by the end of the year too, to help with that. So yeah, and if I could, super quickly, our general fund summary. Let me just scroll. I apologize about the scrolling. I know it's probably not the most easiest to read. I'm sorry. Here is all of our equipment in the general fund. And then if you.
What page are you on?
Oh, my apologies. Page fifty. So this is all in the general fund. And if I could go to a different page, I will wait though. And then if you go to the all funds. We actually have a consolidated list. This is all of our capital projects regardless of fund and we have all of our equipment right here, regardless of fund.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, of course, man.
That's all my questions.
Any else have any questions?
Always appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council.
I would, yeah, I would like to just mention what Shannon, um, when he sent you all the email and copied me. Just at the end of last week with the update that added the all fun summary. We still have, we still have a, a running list. And so again, like, like we always say, if, if you notice some of the, if you notice even, even. You know, I mean, we've got a running list of, you know, there's a comma instead of a period. I mean, with a big document like this. So if you have any, don't worry about, oh, if someone's seen it or not, just send it over to me. I, we're, we're kind of, and then every time we do an update, we'll, we'll get in that. This last update, we spent, really Shannon spent the focus on the all fun summary. And we didn't, we didn't dive into kind of the list we had for a, a number of the, the rest. But the next time we updated, we'll be putting a lot of those, you know, those uh, narrative, uh, you know, um, grammar. You know, uh, improvements and things like that. Um, the other thing is with that email, um, the, it's, it's, it's a, it's the same calendar. But we tried to add page numbers of the, the current draft that we have now of what you can prepare for, for the next. Cause that was a great suggestion during the workshop, you know, we, instead of like we used to do it where it was like this department, this department, this part. Doing it by these strategic areas, you're kind of jumping around and, and some of those sections. So hopefully that helps you. So you can, you know, if you want to, if you want to focus. Before each meeting and not have to feel like you have to read all four hundred pages, you can jump right to those page. But that, so that email from Shannon last week, a good reference point to have. And each cover sheet will have that same information for that. But if you want to ahead of time, just to uh, I appreciate him doing that. And I, I think just wanted to point that out for, depending on what your timing is, it's, timing's not always probably perfect for a Friday to Tuesday. So if you're looking at, you know.
I, I like to jump in and, and pretty, thank you for.
Yeah.
That done because that was very helpful to have the page numbers plus having the summary.
Yeah.
That definitely helps with um, looking at it as we look, still have the, the overall thirty-four million dollar.
Right.
Back to is what we're looking to prove. So.
Yeah, yeah, I certainly appreciate it. Yeah. And of course echo what Mike said, if you see something like that trash uh, fun graph, definitely feel free to let us know. I mean, we spend so much time looking at this document and it's so long that we miss things all the time. That's why I'm glad there's multiple drafts before we get to the adopted draft. But even after you adopt the numbers, we update the draft. We have a lot of eyes on this thing, but it's easy to miss. It's four hundred and fifty pages by the time it's done. So please send those along and uh, always happy to update those.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
All right, with that, your reports can be a little shorter, right, Mike?
Yeah, just a couple, just a few items. Uh, I met with Chief Cavalier with Lower Valley Fire Department uh, this morning, mayor, members of council. And uh, he'd like to invite you all. And it's hard for me to remember which, if, if this group already did this or if it was the previous. But they wanted to invite, I think it was a previous, but, or no, this group. So you've had a tour of Lower Valley Fire. Was that?
I just missed it. I've missed it.
I didn't get to go, but we did just have it. It wasn't too long ago.
Oh, right. So they, they wanted to invite you, they wanted to invite you to a sick, a six PM to six forty-five on November twenty-first. Do you want me to go ahead and set that up? And I mean, if you've already done it, you don't have to be there, but if you'd like to still.
Was the timing of that?
So November twenty-first, it'd be our, the third Tuesday in November, prior to the council meeting. Just meet there at six o'clock and be done by six forty-five. It, it's a, it's a fun tour. It's good to interact with.
I would say go ahead and add it just to honor that they asked us.
Yeah.
Do it. And then, yeah, we.
Then I'll just check with you all as we get closer on.
Thanksgiving.
Oh, right. Okay.
Out of country.
We can also.
I'll be in Mexico for the very.
So they were not set on this date. Um, I, I just looked at the, the. I was just looking at dates that we didn't have something planned, but um, if we have interest, I can look at maybe, look at some other dates. That are a little further out. It, it's not a timing thing. So if there's interest, I'll, I'll get it. I'll look at some others and put that before you in the future. We'll just, maybe we'll get, maybe it's even early next year and then, and then we, okay, all right. And then I did want to give you, uh, I, I want to mention one thing, one reason we haven't brought the draft. First reading draft of the uh, unmanned aircraft or drones um, back is uh, if you're, you know, we were. As we've been working on it, we, we realized from the last, we need to get, I, we still need to have a couple internal meetings with the police department. And with the planning and development department. Um, and we've struggled with that only because we've had. Besides the priorities that we've been working on, everybody's, it's been like training season. So we've either had police gone or, or planning staff gone or myself gone. Um, so, and, and it's not to make. It's easy to make the changes you guys gave us suggestions to, but in preparing for presenting, talking through enforcement pieces. We still need to, we need to collaborate a little bit more so we can clearly walk through, walk through that with, with each of you. It's one thing to just talk about it in general, but it's, it's a different thing to talk about it in practice. And so um, we're not uh, right now. That, that could either turn into a workshop discussion if we need to explain some things that we haven't been able to cover. Or it could be as simple as we add that first reading as you gave us direction to. I just wanted to, I, I, I don't, we need to do that before we can. So that's the only reason it didn't, originally it was on the calendar for tonight, but we, we had to postpone that for that reason.
Can I ask you a question with?
Yeah, yeah.
And I can't remember the. And I can't remember the answer. That's why I'm asking. Have we consulted with any other local or near local agencies that have existing drone experience that like they actively have drones within their departments and have policies to that they live by that that will help us.
It's a, it's a great questionnaire. I think I know we, I know we did from comparing their policies. But I don't know how in depth, and I'd have to ask the departments on there. And that's part of as we come back. I don't know how much of the discussion and implementing we had. I know we had a lot of examples, right? Like example policies, but like in practice, so that's the kind of conversation we want to have internally, but also that would be good. If we haven't, I, I think we can reach out to those to help with our.
Someone's got to have.
Yeah.
See what's effective.
So I know we compared.
Like, we already have privacy laws. We already have property, right, laws. Are we duplicating? Are we, what's, what do we need to have that's
Right.
They would have or not, the reason to duplicate existing other laws.
Yeah. And we're in this, to that note as well, we're, we're trying to double check what we wouldn't, you know, if what's, what's the minimum we do that the, that the feedback council has given us? Sorry. So James right hit the gavel on me. But and make sure we're not, you know, and then what's already covered, you know, so doing some of those comparables. But the the last update I have is about the NRCS study. So if you remember, this is the the federal group that basically funded, I think about a $60,000 study to look at specifically reservoirs reservoir two, but a little bit of one, two, and three, and the pipeline that serves the Glade Park Water Users Association. So not as much with Enic Lake, but one, two, and three. And we, we have not, the, the report's been finalized. Do we have the actual draft yet? Yeah. So we don't have the draft yet, but they gave us a summary. And I just wanted to give you just the the highlights of the summary that that they discussed with us. And then, and then so that you, that you have this, that you're aware of this. So so basically they're looking at an, an estimate to of 2.5 million to repair reservoir to this dam. However, to repair the full dam and all the pipeline and other infrastructure that's all together would be for, they're estimating 4 million. Now estimates are only as good as the actual quotes for when you, when you go out to bid, but this is, you know, they've put a lot into this study. They've are estimating 1.3 million to breach and decommission reservoir two. So it's a, it's a pretty high number. It's a lower number, but it goes up because the forest or US Forest Service requires not only a typically you would just do a breach, but the Forest Service requirement is to remove everything that's been breached. And that's where the, the, the numbers go up. We did receive I think four, five, five, five bids related to breaching. We're sifting through those because what we're seeing is even though we asked for the full cost of the construction of doing it, we have a range of costs, but we're seeing more on just the design of it. And our original ask was not just design it, but actually do it. And so and then there's varying levels in these proposals of working with all the agencies you have to work with. So it's taking a little bit more time to go through and see what's fully thorough and what and where we're at. But that kind of lines, but some of those initial numbers that we're going through kind of line up with that. 1.3 if you're taking it from design, construction, removal of reservoir two. So not final, but I wanted you to be aware of what we're, what we're aware of as, as, as we get it. And since we were meeting tonight, it made it easy to do that. They, in their report, they've, they've communicated to us that their report has recommendations. Their recommendations are to breach reservoir to abandon the pipeline and work with Glade, well, and for Glade Park Water Users Association to seek a, a different source like a well or some other, which wouldn't be us, but some kind of, you know, but being mindful of that whole process of working with Mesa County and those types of things. I mean, it's never been our intent to just leave Glade Park Water Users Association hanging. And then they are basically saying that there's no grant funding that they have any known source with for these types of projects. And a lot of times the reason for that, because we always hear this a lot, go for grants, go for this grants, there's grants for everything. It's very difficult to get certain grants that you're doing the work on federal land. And so that's, that's where we get into this, you know. The reservoir two, the dam is actually on city land, but the reservoir is on federal land. And then the others, the, the whole, you know, the whole lake and dam are on federal land. So we run into these types of issues. We're still waiting to get the full report so we can dissect it more and get that. So and and be able to do an overview of it. But this is what this is what they had communicated to us so far now that they're done reviewing the report and we'll be releasing it hopefully soon to us.
Has this been shared with Mesa County?
Um, we'd like to get, we haven't yet. We haven't yet, but we just, we just got the Kimberly just had the conversation, shared it with me so I could mention it to you all. I think it's kind of timing of if, if, if we're going to get this report soon and we can just share the full report with them. Or do we, you know, if that's still going to keep dragging on, then we'll definitely probably have the same conversation and then say, when we get the report, we'll share with you. But we've, we've, we've offered to share it with Mesa County and all, all the partners, even Forest Service. We have a meeting with them coming up enough next week, I think, or no, in November, sorry, early November. We do have our realtor working, starting to work on drafting, you know, letters of donation that we'll, that we'll have to go back with you all.
That's what I was wondering is this gonna, it's gonna kind of hurt our chances like like, hey, this thing's got a million point three.
Yeah.
With it, it's coming, but I mean, it kind of affected.
Four million dollar.
It's. Yeah.
Like, here, you want this?
But everybody, but it, it does, it does, because it gives it a little more detail, but it's, it's already widely known because it's on the no fill order. And we've been saying, because our estimates from for fixing years ago were around 2 million. We were, we were trying to be careful and we were in the three to four, which is accurate if you're actually doing the whole, whole thing at four, what they're saying, and then a breach 1.3. So it, it, it gives a little more clarity, but there's already the big shocker price tag is pretty much been well known to all these groups. And that's been, you know, so that's not a new a new dynamic in general, but this, this will give more detail what actually would need to be done.
When you say that what was breached would have to be removed, is that like dirt we're talking about? Like, what are we talking about?
Yeah, so.
We like hold that down to the beach property? Turns out we need dirt.
You want to answer that?
Yeah. So part of our special use permit with the Forest Service that dates way back, I think in the early 60s calls out in one of the stipulations that if, that it has to be all removed. Now, like Mike said, we're having a conversation with the Forest Service District Ranger and staff to see if there's any fluctuation with that, that, that they would consider. But dam safety, the state dam safety doesn't require full removal. You can breach it by cutting it down and lowering the level of the dam, but it looks like Forest Service may have that other requirement.
So we've still got a, we, we do have that meeting. I think it's early November scheduled with them. Because reservoir two is the one where you got it on both, right? And according to the state, you know, we don't have to do all that, but according to Forest Service. So we've got to figure out how that, what that really means for reservoir two. I don't think that's something that's in NRCS's report. That was something we just have to work out through them. But we do have that set up to to figure out. But so there's still some unknowns. I just wanted to keep you updated on as we get information on that one, because it's been a, obviously we've had a lot of discussion related to those properties.
Yeah, just one other thing. So we haven't talked specifically to NRCS yet. We've got a meeting, we're trying to schedule with that person. But we have talked to the engineering firm that actually did the feasibility study. And I did get an email from NRCS that says it is not being recommended for any funding based on, you know, the cost benefit and the economic, financial side of it. Lots of public support, obviously, which is what we've seen. And I mean, we had a great stakeholder meeting when we were doing this process, but just doesn't pencil out from a financial aspect.
Going back, those of you that were, if you remember, the, the whole reason we went after the NRCS study and were fortunate to receive that funding, which didn't flow through us, but they just cover it, was the hope of the result being finding funding, you know, recommending funding and another opportunity for funding to do whatever repairs or improvements. So that's the, that's the biggest downside of, so no matter what the report says, the, the biggest reason we did it definitely did not pan out to have a, a second round of funding to actually do repairs through NRCS.
On that, Mike, worst case scenario, if we try to donate, nobody wants, nobody wants it. We're just going to end up having to get the bill on it. We're just going to leave it. What are we looking?
Yeah, that's one thing we're working with our, with Mary Elizabeth, our city attorney, and also some of the discussions with Forest Service and the state. It's definitely not a, we haven't gotten any 100% clear answers, but it does, it is more complicated than being able to just walk away and leave it. So there's, there's responsibilities that carry, but we're trying to figure, we're trying to figure out every alternative with that. Because this is the same question we have. Honestly, if, you know, we can, we have a number of potentials that we're working on, but let's say if none of them panned out, what are we left with? That's not just continuing to do what we're doing, right? And and so we're still seeking through that. I think those are different questions than they typically get asked. So we're, we're talking with them.
There's always next year's federal appropriation bills.
Yeah. And I, and I would just add, I mean, we're making all these efforts and that's sufficient for now with dam safety, but it's not the long term solution they want. They, they do not want to keep this reservoir on a no fill order. So we have to do something, either repair or breach, I think is really the two options it comes down to.
Yeah, there's, there's a timeline at some point. It's going to come.
Yeah. And, and, and like I said, I mean, just taking these steps is sufficient for now with the state dam safety, but not into perpetuity.
I was not being sarcastic about the appropriations.
Yeah.
So in terms of if they're looking for more stuff for next year.
And we have, we actually have had, I mean, you were there with, with Representative Boebert and her staff, but we've had the same staff of both of our senators. We've had conversations related to mountain properties and we're going to continue to do so because I, I mean, it's, we're, we're trying all, you know, any avenue we can seek, we're, we're definitely not. We're not wasting any opportunity to seek after something, but it's, it's been a challenge over the years, right, to find a, a, a easy answer. Or an answer. That's all I have for updates. Sorry, that was a little longer, but I wanted to make sure we.
Nothing new on TMDL as long as we're talking about fun stuff.
No, there's a hearing in December and that'll be the big find out.
All right. With that, we're going to move into our council reports and actions. The first one item has changed the dates on upcoming meetings.
Yeah, I, with this one, Deputy City Clerk Deb Woods just brought up that these are typically things we deal with. We had it on our list for later in the year, but we figured we'd throw it on this one. And it doesn't, it doesn't hurt to talk earlier whether you make a decision tonight or not, but what helps the, the further ahead is it helps us in our scheduling. So you know, currently, if, if we were to cancel these, there's no disruption to any planned presentations, any planned development or anything like that. And if we, if, if we were to run into something where we had a major issue, we'd bring that back to you. And whether it's a different date or something we could schedule. But otherwise we would just plan around it. So our, our recommendation is at least to consider whether you want to do that tonight or or not, but to, to consider canceling a couple of these meetings that land near where we typically have a tough time of getting a quorum or even public participation, honestly.
We're okay if I make a motion.
Before I do that, so I mean, the one on November 13th, as of right now, we don't have any offers on the property. So that might just be canceled, correct? Are we still planning on having a meeting to discuss?
Offers tend to come in last.
Right, they do. I know they do, but I'm just.
Yeah, this was, you, you already told us to schedule it, but since we were, we just wanted to put it, that was just during a.
We really, we need what, 24 hours notice only, correct? If we need to cancel or change.
Correct. Chance that there's, there could be the chance that, you know, hopefully not, but if, if we didn't have any offers, do we still need to talk about what the next steps are that night? You know? Do we extend the time period? Do we do something different? So I, I'd recommend adding that and just keeping it. Hopefully we're reviewing offers. If not, I would think we might still need to just do it to talk about adjusting our, just like you would if you're selling your house and you got to change, change your, your timeline and plan, right? So our strategy. And then we've got, of course, the, so these first two, we've already talked about, we just wanted, if we were going to do a motion, change of meetings, we'd get to just have a motion with adding these as well. That's going to be two parts with Butler Snow doing the overview and then a discussion with two Forex Ventures kind of following up from our, our, our tour. And then and then so December 26, we've, I don't, I don't recall since I've been here nine years, having a workshop in December. Typically we've, you know, we've kind of wrapped up budget, we've wrapped up everything. It's usually the, the, you know, getting close to, you know, holidays, things like that. So we don't have any plans for, for putting anything on that agenda. And then the second, you know, it's an easy call when it's on the first. On the second, it's, it's up to you all. It's just, we can, we can easily work around it. We don't have a backlog right now at that point in time. So up to you all. That's, I'll quit talking on that.
Amy's ready to make a motion then. If I last say, we can always have questions. So.
Well, does anyone have any questions or comments?
Go ahead and make a motion.
Don't want to waste anybody's time. Approve the change. I moved to approve the changes proposed by staff to the dates of the aforementioned regular, special and or workshop meetings of the Fruity City Council.
Second.
All right, we've got a first or second. Are there any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Deb, would you please poll council?
Counselor Perser? Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Hancy?
Yes.
Counsel Breaman?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
All right. With that, we're going to move into our next item, which is establishing a committee to review possible localism board. And so Mike, your name's at the top of that.
Yeah, per your direction, we just, as we discussed before, kind of keeping this as a placeholder for council reports and actions until we get the board established. I know we, we have the online forum. I think this is just an opportunity for you all to talk about if you've had the opportunity to invite people, if you have some people you still need to invite. I think we've received one. We've, okay, so we've actually got three. Okay. All right.
Have we decided how many we want that to be and?
But the committee is different than a board. It's a committee.
We have four. Sorry. Here, I'll, I'll read the names here.
How many do we want on the committee?
So we do have, we have a application from Denise Height, from Torrey Minor, from Shauna K. Carroll and Sam. Oh, man, the way it came up on the, doesn't have his last name, but the mayor I know invited Sam. He comes to, he was on, he, he went, he went through the, he went through the academy, comes to many of the engagements. Yeah. I apologize for forgetting his name. It's T.
So I guess we'll look at, because I've got, I'm meeting on Monday with Joan, who's a lady I met that she wants to know a little bit more about what we're talking about localism. So she wanted to meet. So I'm meeting with her before she fills out an application. I told Janine tonight that it's like, she reads all the Friday updates. She keeps up to date with what's going on. So it'd be, she's been here for eight plus years. So she'd be somebody that's not really active, but follows, is already, yeah, following up with what's going on and and that. So I guess I, that's the type of person I'd like to get on the committee just to give us some feedback. And so the size is, I know James asked that about the size. The size is really up to us for this committee. The board, we'd probably, we'd want to set limits on how many.
Sure.
And then Janine, have you, you haven't heard back from the current downtown board and how many want to be it? Okay. Okay.
There's gonna be some discussion about this then, so.
If we get a decent number from, from the downtown.
So there's three of them only anyways.
Right.
Right, so there's three, yeah, so if you get half of that, you get.
Yeah, there's.
We're at it, we're looking to have a good size, especially, we have a good pool to pick from.
I'm saying if we could get a couple, I mean, I would rather see ten to eleven on the committee, just because it's giving a little more.
Gotcha.
That's my opinion, I don't know what everybody else thinks, but as a committee, it's a short-term. Thing, so the more feedback we get, to me, will give us maybe a little better direction on what we do with actual board.
There's still a few weeks out before we start to do it. That's great, we're in a good position, I think.
So if you do know of other people that would want to serve on this again, I mean, I was thinking of past counselors, you know, see Heather here that was willing to serve on that board. Is there, you know, who's other past counselors that would be, does anybody know that Cullen guy? I mean, just to get. So, I'd say, keep looking for people, because again, the whole point is to get people engaged. You know, uh, I think having that diversity and, you know, I'm okay with a little larger committee, because I think it, it gives us more insight. All right, thank you, Mike. All right, we're gonna move into council reports and actions. I'm gonna start out here with Matthew.
Uh, I missed the fruit of chamber meeting, so I have nothing to report.
All right, Janine?
Uh, we had the arts and culture meeting last week and. It's kind of just sort of a review of some things, like the review of how the, um, art walk went after the installation and thing, and things like that. And, um, just coming into our next meeting really with some ideas about how to. What the next year is gonna look like, so that's sort of where they're looking at. Joel and I have a couple of interviews for that board. For, um, for one seat. Made me want to think, ask a question, because we actually have two applicants for one seat. There's, um, there's currently seven members and there's nine, um, seats available. And I guess I never realized that the council liaison takes up an actual seat. Um, of, of multiple, I don't know if not all, but of many of the boards. And I am curious about your guys' thoughts about our, us taking up one of those actual seats. Opposed to actually, like the liaison, liaison term to me, it's not like, like the staff doesn't take up a seat. That are on the, you know, so I, I'm curious about. That we actually fill one of those spots kind of takes away.
Hey, that's a good question for a workshop.
I'm just, I'm just curious.
Well, the question was brought up, cause it was like, oh, do we have alternates for that? Cause I know we do the same thing, we did the same thing with planning. The challenge has been over the years, it's been, we have a hard time finding people, then all of a sudden we have a glutton of people that wanna be on. So in our arts and culture board, as Janine and I talked a little bit, or through email kind of was. They have so much interaction and they have so much planning and work that if you had. A couple of alternates, it's more people to spread out some of that workload too, because they're very active. But I don't, I know it's the way we set up the bylaws and some of that, there are restrictions on what we can do. Cause I think police commission, you have to have a, a counselor or mayor on that one, right?
I'm just not sure that they counted as a seat member.
Yeah, I think.
The voting member, the voting is.
And then, well, even just when it says nine, yeah, members.
Yeah, I'm pretty, pretty sure that'd be something you all, you all could change, whether it's in bylaws or an ordinance. That, that establishes more, um, but yeah, I, I think that'd be a good, I don't know if that's a, something you. You wanna have a future discussion on, we could double check and make sure like which boards, if there's any that have a nuance, like the charter went more detailed than we're. Remembering or something, you know, but I'm pretty sure, cause we've looked at so many of them. That it would be an action you all could take the, for the majority of.
Like tonight on the planning, similar.
Right.
Might be an ordinance process. Resolution process, it could be different for each board.
There is, there is the boards and commissions policy too, that the council adopted. And it speaks to it a little bit, Judy and I had sent you a section of it that talks about council liaison positions. And it's kind of weird, it's like one board, the livability commission. Uh, the council liaison member does not vote. But on all the other boards, they do. And whether that constitutes being a seat or not, I don't know, but it probably could be clarified, I would think in that, in that policy.
I agree with the, like, I've always felt a little uncomfortable, like on, you know, historic preservation, like voting on that when they're like. And then they, it's similar to like planning and zoning, where I'm like, I'm contributing to like influencing this, but like, is that, you know?
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
Conversations of, you know, what they ask for in the city and then I get to vote for it, it always feels like a conflict of interest.
Yeah.
And I agree, like the, to me, the label liaison means like you're just kind of there observing and then, you know. The mode of communication, like you're the, the, you relay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but see, I said on the, we were talking about the museum board and we weren't a voting member. And it's kind of like, wait a minute, we're, we have interest in building and property and other things, and so it's kind of like, okay, wait, when? When do we wanna have that? You know, wh-what is our interest in that specific board that would? Really mandate that we should have a voting.
Right.
Interest.
Cause I think there are some that it would make sense that we do, like.
Kind of oversee. A board, then maybe you don't need a voting council member on that board, but when you don't oversee something, but it does affect. In that bin and those like.
But then Matthew's on the other side of it saying, wait a minute, we're, they're trying to figure out budget.
Yeah, I mean, they can ask us.
That's outside, and you know, it's, we don't, haven't discussed further is how much participation do we want? Council liaisons to be on boards, we've been per se heavy on attendance and, and participation. And when they're advisory. How much do we need to be there? We haven't had that discussion yet that we've had, or as we've been going through the whole board process. And so I, I, I think it'd be great to have, have that, have that point, plus just some other ideas or I, other topics with it of. Um, continue that conversation on a, on a workshop.
Mike, you were gonna say something about.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I, I, we'll definitely do a quick run through the boards. What it would take if that were something you wanted to change, simply, you know, is a, and each one might be a little different, but. And, and maybe the, and the policy as well, so we can, we can have that ready for a future discussion. I was just gonna, earlier, I was just gonna mention that, uh, you know, the, the outside boards that you sit on. You know, it may be a discussion on how you, how you interact with those, but, but. The difference with those is you don't get to create their bylaws or create their rules, so. Might be invited to be on a, a board, but you know, you, you, you know, as a board member, you're a voting member and then, but then. How do you interact as a, as a group by saying, you know, like I can vote on this, but then it's gonna go to the council, right? So I mean, there.
GJAB, you have Grand Valley Transit.
Yeah.
I mean, you have things that were vested.
I'm saying, we don't get to change those, we can, but we can talk about how to.
Our policy and how we.
And just delineate that, like be like, okay, for each of these, like here's.
Our advisory. My ordinance are.
But I think the challenge is, and I know Ken's seen it, it's like, wait a minute, I don't know. Sometimes I, he's voting on stuff that he doesn't never really know what the council thoughts are. So with some of those external boards, it's a little more challenging, cause it's, wait a minute, I'm at a meeting and they're all of a sudden talking about stuff that. I really don't know the direction of what council wants, so I think some of that may be some of the discussion too is, okay. How do we prop the council members that are going to some of these external boards for? I think most of you guys have a good idea of what our community wants, but there may be things that.
Yeah.
They're voting on that, we, we need to make this.
Yeah, it's a good one too to add to that.
So the question would be when, like, if we want to do a workshop, what does that look?
Next reasonable one.
And then, yes, and then in the meantime, since we do have two people that we're interviewing for one seat is an alternate position. Like, does something have to happen before we even allow that even, like?
These are not allowed to have a.
Are we allowed already as is to have an alternate, or does something else have to happen for that team?
Well, the bylaws, I don't think, I can't remember what we did for planning, cause we added.
I think we just did an update to them, but where we added in. Alternates. I think you could. I, I could be speaking out of term, but I think you could designate them as option and then we create in their bylaws. You know, we'd have to do an update to the bylaws that if it doesn't address it now, right, then, then there isn't a position.
But we do have some upcoming.
But, but.
Oh, you've got some term members.
Yeah, the next one is termed out in May.
Okay.
That's the.
Yeah.
Chair.
There's always the point that it's like, you like both candidates, you're gonna take one over the other, but the second one's like, we're, we're looking. Hold, hold still for a bit, you're not.
No, it's not right, it's not quite yet, yeah.
And the conversation always has to be, they're open meetings, they're public meetings, so you can come, I mean, they're, yeah, that, I, and I think that's kind of the.
True.
The, kind of the way I would like to.
They just couldn't vote, they could still be there and.
I mean, I.
They couldn't be part of the, right, but at least they could stay up to date while we figure out what we're.
And technically, that would be the way to handle it and tell you if you chose to make a change.
Okay. Yeah. Yep, and then, um, when the downtown advisory board does. Fade out, uh, I was wondering if we wanted to do something like honor or something. All of the current and past board members of the. Like if we just did some, I don't even know what you would do, but just some acknowledgement in a council meeting or something for them.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, I agree.
At least they get people sitting out here.
Maybe, yeah, we could get a, an amicable audience.
Just don't do it on a school night.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Either full house or.
They're out, hasn't it? I think, did we miss the scheduling of that?
No, Mike's writing down, I.
So I, I have the three items, um, I, the, right now on the November workshop is. Pretty light from the standpoint of, there's no real presentation for the budget, we always just leave an item on the budget, because that's a great opportunity. In between the first reading and second reading, if you have any like. You know, or we receive some new information, I mean, this year there could be a little of that, we've built the budget to not have to make drastic changes. But, you know, pending the election and proposition HH, I mean, there, there's always something, right? That, um, but it's not a long presentation, it could just be, hey, I had one more question I found and it, sometimes that goes pretty quick. That's all we have right now, there's the, there could be the potential of drones, but we could, I, you know, we could, we could do this first. If, if needed and then drones, you know, later, so I'm thinking there's a potential of doing this on the November workshop.
I would say that it would be nice to do it sooner than later, because of the fact that we've already been in this process with the, with all these. So let's get this wrapped up.
Potential. It'd be nice to kind of get things going for next year.
Yeah, yeah, let's get this.
A lot of, a lot of, a lot of these commissions take December off anyway, so if we did it, then we could try and get some things going by the time they're back.
I, I'm gonna thumbs up.
November workshop.
And I have one more, um, question with elections and such things coming up. What are the rules of what we're allowed or not allowed, or even just what the right feeling is to do in endorsing people? With our city council tagline on the back of our name or not.
Our council's past perception, her perspective is, you get a council to approve you putting your name on it. And you're allowed to do that.
If you're getting wet.
So if you want to endorse somebody, you have to bring it here and have all the council say, yes, you know, um. So you're not just using your name, now the paper likes to do whatever they want to do, right? I mean, they, they put your name in every article that they can, I mean, they, they put your title in, but as far as. And again, this is up to council, if you guys want to change that, you know, that's gonna be a choice, but we've said in the past, in order to keep things transparent. Okay, if you're gonna put your name in it, the council, if you want to put your name on as citizen, then you can do whatever you want as an individual. It's just hard to just disseminate between the two, I mean, when you're in this role.
Yeah, my, my understanding is, and not trying to play attorney, but my understanding is legally, there's, there's nothing that keeps you from doing it. But as a group, you guys can kind of decide how you want to handle that and it's really up to you all.
That'd be a tricky perception.
I'm always concerned also in terms of potential backlash, so if I say, you know, whatever my title is. Endorsing this candidate, but the current candidate or the, there's somebody else in that current office, they know.
Yeah.
And then is there potential for retaliatory?
And then.
Behaviors.
Yeah, even without our title, do we have a feeling about what's appropriate and not appropriate there? Or do we not really get to have a say in that?
I don't want us to do that. That's definitely, I don't even want to discuss that, it's, it's, it's another discuss with the title, but if it's just your own name.
It's fine, is what I guess.
Your own prior prerogative.
But as Joel alluded to, the paper will. The paper will always add your title and it doesn't matter how you did it officially.
We just did that with Matthew this week. It had nothing to do with city council or anything.
It's nothing, and we always keep that out. We're very, very careful.
I know, I, they just know what your title is, so.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, I just wanted to be, have some.
Ooh, all right, we got through hers, are we done? James?
Um, I was gone, I missed tourism, but it seemed, I talked to Shannon about it briefly, we basically just approved, uh, our funding requests. Other than that.
Can I make a request for tourism? I don't know how like much communication you have with whoever does their social, their face, it drives me insane that they call it eighteen mile road. We do not live in Detroit, like, this is. Can we drop the mile? Like, can we at least, can we at least have accurate, like?
In the future, right, Mike, we're changing internally, we're gonna be taking over most of that.
Yeah, and that, that transition's starting already.
That would be much appreciated.
Essentially, it won't be in their scope of work.
Finally commented on it, I was like, can you please just drop the mile, like?
Is it Eighteen Avenue or Eighteen Drive? Which one would you?
Yeah. I'm just.
Highway.
Thumbs up to all that.
And that's not the only inaccuracy there's been, but that's a consistent, like, they talk about eighteen mile road all the time, and I'm like, that is, that is not a thing.
With you on that one, yeah, I think it's already been communicated, but we'll make sure.
I know it's all, I know it's all about me and my frustration level, so. Sorry, Jane, I thought maybe you might have a little leverage there.
For saying about, cause yes, that I'm never very happy with money things that that agency does. That's me, that's it.
That's it, all right, Amy, now you can go.
Yeah, uh, planning and zoning, we had a very engaged meeting, very, very engaged meeting. You probably saw some of, um, the results of that, uh, and you will see it again, we will see it again. Um, and then I would like to, um, put out, do a proclamation for the, um. The family that so graciously opened up their sunflower field for the community. It was a really, really cool thing and such a fruit of thing, like it was just really a neat thing. Um, so I don't know if I just need to like get with Deb for that, like I.
Yeah.
As long as everybody gives you a thumbs up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't expect much opposition, but I shouldn't have assumed.
Doesn't want to have to write it, so.
No, no, I am happy, I'm happy to, I will just need like some direction on, I have never written a proclamations.
I think, I think, uh.
Two sentences, whereas after.
And, and Deb, feel free to add in, but I think if, if you can get the gist of, don't worry about the formatting as much, but the gist of like. What they did, who the people are and that, we can get it in the whereas format.
Want to do, cause we do proclamations for certain things, do you want to be like, uh, we've done it where it's like, a certain day is the proclaiming their day? Or do you want to just be a thank you pro?
To thank you, like a.
Be inappropriate to give them like an F work or a F gear?
That would, that'd be awesome.
They said they were gonna get rid of it, right? Now, the reason I'm asking that is it, I don't know, it'd be kind of hard to facilitate this, but it would be really neat if we did council and staff and everybody go out and did a picture.
And we'd have to do it, we'd have to do it like tomorrow, because the cows get put out, I think Friday. So it's, I mean, it's kind of an experimental.
So it's, I mean, it's kind of an experimental, like, they're, they're doing that property as a no-till. And so that was that, I mean, that's the, the real, yeah, that's the real objective of the property. But they were kind and gracious enough to, yeah, allow the public to.
Pictures.
It's incredible, yeah.
So phenomenal.
Yeah, it's so cool. So I just, I thought it would be.
Anybody get a picture in there? Yeah, my, I have family members that did, but I, I was just gonna say, if any of you did, Matthew just put us all in there.
There you go. You could just Photoshop our, our, our group picture into.
Maybe, could we maybe at least have somebody go out and just take a picture of it, and maybe make it the header of our.
Yeah.
Page for a week or so.
That might be cool.
Yeah, I think we have.
Like the idea of giving a gear or something.
Oh, for sure, if that would be okay.
We have some.
Amy, I don't know if you were, like, wanna get with them to see if they could come to the next council meeting, because that would be the ideal one.
I'd be happy to, like, yeah, yeah. I can get their contact information from, their, their next door neighbors are good friends of mine, that, so, yeah.
That'd be on the setup.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, that's.
Yeah, because our workshops.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's good. So that gives enough. Okay, good. I didn't think I would get much pushback from that, but I didn't wanna. That's all I got.
All right, Aaron?
Two main topics, uh, one museum, uh, they put an offer to a director, he did not take it, so they are, they still do not have a director. What are your guys' thoughts? It looks like their trailers are starting to hang out into the parking lot more again. I don't, I just. It's, it doesn't look as bad as before, but I don't know, it'd be nice. If we get them to pull back and just not look like it's a storage lot at times.
Sam and I go there quite often for the dog park, and what we've noticed is that recently a sign was put up. That says no RV parking, and.
And it's RV.
Result to that, but we did notice that a few weeks prior to that, there was literally people just sitting there camping, barbecuing, like, out there and stuff. So it does kind of invite.
Well, it's, others don't know, like, visitors don't know that those are not RV, like, public. Their, their business RV stuff, not things, so I don't know if it's.
We, we have to routinely, probably once, probably like twice a year. We have to request them to move them back to the bill, they, they'll end up using them somewhere, and then they'll bring it, you know, bring them back. And someone will just park it right in the middle.
There's a couple in the middle right now, and that's, I was gonna say, can we have them moving back, so that's one.
I think there's four of them now that are out, and it's just, it looks better when they moved it back, like, when we asked them to move for the dog parks, uh, when you were dedicating that. It looks.
Just do that, I mean, we, we do it already, so if, if they, if they're back again, because it.
They've got space back in that.
Doesn't help with our public parking lot perception of not camping, you know, it gives a perception of camping there, even though they're museum owned.
Perception that they're part of the.
Right.
Yeah, but when they're out in the middle, it looks like they're just sitting there.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Okay. The last thing is just, there was the Religious Freedom Conference, it was a great conference. I thought, and we got some government's items brought in, I know an individual brought up, like, supporting, for example, Catholic outreach. And is that against the law or not? And it's like, yes, they give money to that one organization, but they're the only ones who help significantly. With outreach. So it was very interesting, the first speaker was out of touch with the rest of it.
In kind.
Yeah. I get the hint that he will not be invited back again. I think a lot of people were curious about that, because the rest of them. Very much right in line with any and all to have freedom of religion and how to do it, and not just to grind to. An axe to grind, man, it was interesting, but I thought it was a great conference, I hope they continue it again.
Are you part of that board that puts that together?
No, but I know people who are part of helping it, go forward. And I, I was pushing them to, it's like, make this an annual thing, there's so many good things that could come from this. Conference.
If it's being done again, I know some people that would be very good at replacing the first speaker.
Yeah. And there was the, the concluding speaker, unfortunately, I think, Matt, you missed them, right? It was a lawyer that, that's all he does is practice. Religious law, like First Amendment, subcategory, religion. And it was awesome how he did it, and just the ability to kind of take some of the. Challenges out and just bring it down to, how do we need to discuss it? So it was awesome. I think, Mike, were you there?
Yes, yeah, I've got lots of notes, if you want them, from the last speaker.
Yeah, yes, he, he was awesome, he was just, he just cut and dried, it's like, I don't care, like, he opened it up, and it was just, it's any and all things, no hold. No holding back, bring it on, but that's, he's, he's paid to go out and give speeches like this into communities, so.
In fact, he's, he spoke to my alumni city manager group in Austin the Monday of that week at the conference for, over a dinner, so.
He's highly sought after, I said, well, I'll schedule him again for next year, because I think he was good enough to bring, to bring back, but. That's it.
I did get an inquiry from Winston Bremen about the bark parks, and somebody brought that up. Uh, wanting to know when the water gets turned on and off at the.
Except with the water being off.
Yeah.
It's off right now?
Well, or that, or the button doesn't work. Winston was very concerned, he had played hard, chased a couple.
It's not an automated, it's not a self-watering station, it doesn't have what, two forms. If it had that, it would, it'd notify.
I will do, he was concerned he was playing ball and fetching, he's very thirsty.
I'll find out and get something in the update related to that. I, yeah.
Otherwise, it was a two-paws-up experience, but.
All right. Is the rest of the council done and ready for me to report? All right, I don't, I don't have anything to report, I have police commission tomorrow night. So with that, the time is now nine thirty-nine PM, and we conclude our meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.